Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Thursday, June 27th, 2019. If we could all please rise for our pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out tonight. Suzanne and Michael will be here. They're just running a little late, so we're gonna start the meeting. Since we have a quorum anyways, we'll go ahead and begin. So I will make a motion to approve regular session minutes of March 12th, 2019, regular session minutes of June 13th, 2019, and safety subcommittee meeting minutes of June 14th, 2019, and acceptance of warrants 52 P-19 and 53 V-19.
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Bless you.
God bless you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We don't have a student rep tonight. Is there anyone here from the public that wants to talk about anything on the agenda tonight that we're not aware of you being here? Anyways, okay. Alright, great. So we do have CPAC here. They're gonna come on up and talk to us this evening. Thank you for coming. You're welcome.
We have some new leadership.
So, right, are you both, you're co-presidents?
We are co-chairs, yes.
Co-chairs, okay. And can you just tell me who you are? I know you're Joni.
Yes, Joni Deslitz.
Okay.
And I'm Chrissy Burke.
Hi, very nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you guys, too.
Thank you, guys, for taking that on. But it's always nice to have someone with you that you can kind of bounce things off of, especially when it's your first time. So why don't you tell us a little bit about what's going on?
So we had, elections were held on June 5th, and for the first time, we're excited that all seats had candidates running for them.
That's excellent.
And all seats are now filled. Chrissy and I being the new co-chairs. Jed Harrell will stay on as treasurer. Carol DeLuca is the fundraiser chair, and Chris and Jess Vasilenko are co-secretaries. So we've got a lot of enthusiasm, a lot of energy. We're excited. We've already started a lot of things. We're working on the Tricor Trunk event for October. We've scheduled a few workshops already for the next school year, and we've got some emails out waiting to hear back for some others. Working on the fall newsletter that we've started. We've got, we're gonna increase, we voted recently to increase our MassPAC membership to try and get some new, fresh, different variety of workshops, trainings, et cetera.
And the great thing about that is that they have mentorship programs with some of the local CPACs who are, you know, the leaders have been in the position for a little bit longer. So we're looking forward to taking, you know, advantage of that.
That's great. So that would mean like when other districts have things, we can go, we can join them?
Well, what I, as I understand it, it's more of an opportunity for new officers to collaborate with other, you know, CPACs who are well-established. But even this past year, we were able to attend other CPAC trainings. And we're not certain if we will continue with the plans to collaborate with Penn Tucket for next year in Haverhill. That was in the talks, but we're not quite sure the direction we're gonna take with that.
So what about the workshops, though? Like, I know we have great ones, we've had great ones in the past. So if other districts do have them, can we, are we invited, or...
We could certainly reach out to those presenters and see if they're interested in doing one here. And most of them are open to other surrounding towns anyway. So if we share it on our page, or, you know, people from here can certainly go there, and then we can also kind of piggyback on that, too.
Right. Well, and sometimes can the CPACs join together to, like, to pay for a workshop or something?
So that's part, one of the things we're looking into with the MassPAC is they'll have a couple that are, the basic rates is free through MassPAC, and then you can get some that are 50% off. So, and then, looking at other towns, we can certainly see what they're doing, and we can do something else so that we can, they can, they can benefit from ours and we can benefit from theirs.
Right. So then the fundraising, then, is that how you pay for that, for the presenters to come?
Up to now, we have been able to secure all of our presentations pro bono.
Yeah.
Nice.
So we're working on a few resources that we connected with in the spring to hopefully continue on with that. We also are in the process of designing a Survey Monkey to survey our parents specifically on what education or training opportunities that they would like to see this coming year.
Yeah.
It's a great idea.
We'd also like to use our resources we have in Georgetown.
Yeah, we have such great resources.
We do. And, you know, in the past, it was, I don't know, somewhat frowned upon to use what we have. But we've got such great leadership, and Jack's so willing to work with us, that we've, we've got one scheduled for the spring to have our adjustment counselors do a social-emotional growth.
Yeah, that'll be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, they know, they know their stuff.
Yeah. So we've, we've got a lot of things kind of up in the air, but we're working on it throughout the summer to get that started. We've reached out, we've gonna set up a liaison with the PTA, the GEF, and the new Community Youth Center, so that we can all work together on each other's fundraising events and help each other, everybody helps each other. We've created a new welcome packet that will be handed out at every initial IEP meeting. And I just got the last paper for the last scholarship that'll be going out for our graduating seniors. Yeah.
Okay. That's great. How many did you, did you award?
We awarded 17. There were 18 graduating seniors. We awarded 17, and I just got the, Carol just handed me the last paper for the 18.
Mom came by today, so I said, oh, Joni's gonna be there, I'll give it to her.
Yeah, that's great.
She's awesome. So is Pam still the liaison to the CPAC? Is that still, or we are gonna reorganize in the, in the fall, right?
Right, yeah. I mean, I'd certainly be very happy to. I, you know, enjoy that position, and I love working with you guys and doing everything I can to, you know, enhance communication and relationship. If somebody else had a, you know, burning desire to take that position, certainly I'd be willing. But otherwise, I'd be very happy to continue. But we can, you know, we can talk about that in August.
Well, Pam has actually sat in your shoes.
Right, right, yes. I've been chairing the CPAC, so.
And that's always good.
Yeah. Wonderful organization. I don't know what I would have done without it as a, you know, my, I had a child that went on IEP as a kindergartner, and, you know, it required a lot of time and learning and effort and angst and...
And that's part of our vision, too, is to get more people to realize that you're not alone. We're here to help.
Right.
We're here to be a shoulder, we're here to do whatever we can, and kind of break that stigma of special education.
Yeah, I agree 100%.
Exactly. And, you know, I mean, yeah, to just always, always have hope. But I, I enjoy, you know, hearing other parents' success stories of, well, this is what happened with us, and this really worked, or this is what happened with us, and this didn't work so well, so then we did this instead. And, you know, there was just a lot of mutual learning that I found could go on when people got engaged with the CPAC, so.
And we're making, especially making an effort to try to target the incoming kindergarten class with some families that might be brand-new to the public system. We've been at the kindergarten orientation night, we were at screening. So we're just trying to raise our awareness and presence to try to capture some of those younger kiddos.
Are you gonna, are you, well, something for you to think about, if you wanna continue to meet with Jack and me. You know, we, we met, well, didn't have to be monthly, but we, you know, we met every couple of months. And it was just an open discussion.
Yeah.
So you could think about whether or not you want to continue to do that, and we just get some things scheduled.
Okay.
I think Pam came to as the liaison.
So how do you initially reach out to, like, parents that have children that are being assisted?
Well, like I said, now they will get a welcome packet.
Right, so then, right.
For initials.
Yeah.
Jack has been very helpful in, we just had a, we started a newsletter that he blasted out to all the, because we can't be privy to the emails.
They can't, they don't have access to any of it.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's...
Unless you ask them. So what you should do, I think, is to say, once you send it out, right, and then say if you would like to...
Yeah, we have our own email listing.
Then you'll get your own email list.
From on our own website, we have our own email listing. But we can't reach everybody. But, so Jack has been very helpful in blasting it out. Carol has put it on her blog, Deanna's put it on his blog, you know, Jack's blog, and we're just, Margaret put it on her this week, so at least it's getting recognized a little bit. We have a Facebook page that we're constantly like, hey, come join us.
What's the Facebook page?
Georgetown CPAC.
That's great.
And a lot of it is too word-of-mouth.
Yeah.
We've gotten a few contacts recently with that, so.
And if you, you know, want something to go on the district Facebook page, you can just reach out to me, and I can put it up there, too, you know, to get the word out.
Great, awesome.
Yeah, well, that, that's awesome. And again, I thank you for, for taking it on. I know there was a time there, wasn't there, that you didn't have somebody that took it over, so you kind of had to, at times, there has been difficulty...
Right, I did not have a co-chair, and, yeah.
Finding somebody to want to take it on.
Yeah, when I took it on, a lot of the people in other positions were ready to retire.
Yeah, yeah.
So that made it a little bit difficult. But then, you know, one, other new ones came about, and then in 2012, I was elected to the school committee, and I just, I felt like...
Right, yeah, you couldn't do both, yeah.
Yeah, it just wouldn't be a good idea to do both.
And how old are your children?
So I have a son going into seventh grade and another going into second.
Okay.
I have twin, four almost-five-year-old girls, and my son will be seven.
Oh, okay.
So we're just getting into it.
Well, that's good, great, it's good. And is your son looking forward to the middle school?
Uh, so he's, he's the reason why I'm here. So he's a little, he's excited, but he's apprehensive.
Sure.
You know, we've got, we've got a good plan going for the transition.
He's gonna be good.
He's gonna do great.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, I've been part of CPAC since he started at Pearlie at three years old.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
So I just didn't feel confident enough in my knowledge back then, but now, you know, nine, nine years in, I feel a little bit more confident in what I'm doing, so.
And your son, and all of your children are very lucky, too.
Yeah.
Have you want to partake in this, because it is a big undertaking, as well as caring for your, your children and your family. So that's great. Well, I look forward to working with you guys. I'm sure you guys share that.
Same here.
And we'd love to have you, you know, come to meetings and such, and you can, like, update us with the presentations that you have going on. And I know you're great about including it, and the superintendent as well, but we always love to hear.
Yeah, we usually schedule, like, a couple of meetings a year, where you just know that that's the time you come, and you can tell the committee whatever it is you want, right?
Yeah.
And then at subcommittee reports, I, I try to update the committee on your latest upcoming CPAC presentation that I'm aware, that I know about.
So if you feed information to Pam, she can...
Yes, you know, if you want me to blast out information in any way, just let me know.
And when is the first scheduled? Is there something scheduled for the fall already?
No, I don't have anything for the fall. So today, I don't have anything really to announce. But most meetings I do, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, ladies.
If we can be of assistance, too.
Great, thank you.
Throughout.
Appreciate that.
Definitely let us know.
Yeah, we're excited.
Not that we have yet, so I'm sure we can try and figure it out, too. But I commend you both.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Trying to enjoy the summer. But it sounds like you're already planning, you guys are good, already planning the...
I told Joni she could go, probably go first, and she said, good, so I can get to baseball.
Go to baseball.
Oh, yeah, go to baseball. It's a perfect night for baseball.
Alright, thanks again.
That's your space, right, that's... Okay, thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we also have John Cashel.
Yep.
He's got all his stuff.
Thank you for letting me speak this evening. And early, I had a planning board meeting here last night, and we're here till our goal.
Oh, I'm sure.
Ten o'clock-ish.
Also, there's other people that occupy this room until 10 o'clock.
Yeah. It was a long one for us.
We feel your pain.
Yeah.
Sometimes, thank you.
So before I get this up and running, the reason why I'm here, last year, the town got a $50,000 grant from the state, and that was to investigate the possibility of implementing in the future, and if everything goes right, and all the stars line up, and this actually happens, a wastewater treatment system for the downtown area. You know, it's kind of the immediate downtown area and the surrounding area. It may expand if this proposal does move forward. One of the, the most important features of trying to implement a small sewer facility, wastewater treatment facility for a town, is to locate the actual treatment plant. And it's a 50 by 80-foot main building, and then an accessory building that's about half the size. And then, in addition to that, is leaching capacity. Because we're really not talking about a system that is going to discharge through several communities. Like, Haverhill has the largest wastewater treatment facility in the region, and they do have capacity. But in order for Georgetown to possibly ever take advantage of that capacity, besides the multi-years that would be involved in developing an agreement, it's, you know, three or four times the cost of going from Georgetown to Haverhill. You know, it's in the neighborhood twenties of millions of dollars, as opposed to what we're proposing would be in the five to seven million dollar range. And, you know, as far as the funding, if it does get to the point where the town supports it, and through annual town meeting, and we do have the, we do organize the, the financial arrangements for making it financially feasible, you know, that's probably some time out. So where we're at now, we have the study, it's been done. The Economic Development Committee got a major presentation by the engineer, Dan Coughlin. He does this for a living, plans these types of systems, and works towards their fruition if he is contracted. And he may not be the vendor eventually, but, you know, he's well-versed, he knows what he's doing, he knows it's a complicated issue, especially for the, the aspects involved with this town.
So what kind of an engineer is he?
He's a, he's a professional civil engineer that specializes in developing, designing, engineering wastewater treatment facilities, plants.
Thank you.
Dan Coughlin, let me see if I can pop this up and do a couple of quick visuals to better orient to, to what I'm talking about. Now, this is the study area right here. So this overall map is Georgetown, but this is the downtown area, and this is the middle high school here. And I'll zoom in a little bit now that we're...
So just the little gray area? Or the whole gray?
That's what he's talking about.
This border, bordering area, yeah, this is the primary wastewater treatment area that we were looking for, and that's the downtown area at the intersection of North Street and East and West Main Streets. And it may expand, the area may expand to include the perimeter areas, you know, several hundred to maybe even 1,000 feet beyond. When we go further into this, we get deeper into it. Now, this was a study that was done to involve the, the entire mass area of the town. Where could we actually treat the leachit that's involved? Because Georgetown does not have a municipal sewer system. They have municipal water, but no sewer. And, you know, that's been a subject that's been talked about in this town for well over 50 years. And it's been proposed at various times in various decades over the years before town meeting, and it was never successfully achieved as far as being implemented as a, a public infrastructure utility for the town. So what happened was, when I became a town planner, one of the tasks in the interview process was to put together a proposal on how a town the size of Georgetown could actually move forward with the possible implementation of a wastewater treatment facility. And that was my task when I interviewed for the job. And, you know, I spent a lot of time on that at that point in time. And then, when I did get the job finally, and really got working with the Economic Development Committee, who has members largely made up of the Board of Selectmen and various interested parties in the economic well-being of the community. We, we worked on the priorities facing the community for well over a year. And I was hired in February 2017. So between February 2017 and February 2018, we really focused on all the issues. And what we determined, this was the number-one issue that we would love to be able to, you know, accomplish as an economic development goal. And we did focus on the reality being that the downtown area, its number-one problem, the number-one problem facing it, infrastructure problem, is that it doesn't have sewer capacity, which limits the amount of uses, it limits the density of uses that can go on down there. Everybody in the downtown area, like all residential properties in Georgetown, has to handle their own effluent on-site. It doesn't get to go anywhere. So that's the issue. It's very constrained, the potential down there, and, you know, for restaurants to move in, and other businesses that are, you know, consider higher uses of water and discharging of the waste after the usage. It, it's very constraining, and it is the number-one issue.
John, at one point, there was discussion about that there was capacity under the Pearlie field.
Yeah.
So is that, what, whatever happened with that? Did that just not prove to be true?
Well, it, it has some capacity, but this study was so thorough, and everybody was chomping on the bit for it to get completed. And, you know, I stayed in constant contact for over a year with the engineer. And, you know, I kept on telling everybody, you know, we want it done right.
Yeah.
You know, and to do something right takes time, especially in regard. So one of the elements of the study that did take time was to figure out exactly how much effluent is produced by the properties within the study area. And that was found, found to the nth degree. On average, it's 13,000 gallons per day of effluent being treated within the study area. Now, all things considered, and being able to properly build a system and build in the extra capacity that's necessary to meet all kinds of environmental criteria, that system that we're talking about would have to handle effluent capacity of 75,000 gallons per day, which is way over and above what the average is. But with the 75,000 gallons per day, that allows for envisioning higher densities of uses, more varied uses that would produce more effluent. So that includes more restaurants.
Yeah.
You know, and that was, that's a goal of the Economic Development Committee, to, you know, actually have a more vibrant downtown area that includes a variety of restaurants, and, you know, ice cream shops, and, you know, other types of businesses that desperately need, you know, more.
Were they talking more about building up, too, but like in the second floor?
Yeah.
Because I saw some pictures of the old Georgetown, and actually, the square looks very different. But it actually, a lot of it was two-story buildings. I think there was actually housing up there or something, yeah, yeah.
And, and on that subject, settlers is a good example. They're in the middle of a site plan review. Be honest with you, the ocean's going a lot, going along a lot smoother, but, you know, timing's everything.
Yeah.
Summer months come into effect, and schedules get deferred. But in any event, that project may, it may prove to be a little ahead of its time, or considerably ahead of its time, because they have to produce their own septic capacity on, on the property right now. You know, it's, it's not a planned site for this potential sewer capacity being...
What is, what is going on at settlers?
They're, they're, it's a redevelopment of the site to include a large portion of the existing structure, which used to be a mansion at one point, that was transformed into an antique shop. It's a mansored design, very significantly architecturally featured property, and they're gonna bring that main structure back into its prominence of yesteryear. And it includes seven townhouse units in the back.
I didn't know that.
Ordering the...
That kind of aligns with what I remember people talking about at a town visioning program, event. And they, they wanted some more in-town, over 55 potentially, housing, residential units.
A quick aside to that.
Offside.
CVS right behind us here, their second floor is, is under review right now with the planning board. They were successful with the ZBA with their application to them. They're gonna introduce seven units of housing, five two-bedroom units and one, two, one different...
CVS?
Behind, behind or on?
On top.
On top. There's no, there's no difference going to be introduced to the building. It's not being larger. What, what's happening is, is office space that's really hard to lease out.
That was where the fire, right?
Yeah.
Didn't the fire occur there?
Yeah. So that's, you know, what we, and we had to change the zoning for that last year, which we were successful in doing. And, and really, part of the economic development, you know, revitalization effort, reuse envisioning for the downtown areas to introduce quality housing.
Right.
You know, the Friendly 40B on 34 East Main Street, the Olson Property, that's kind of been stuck in limbo right now. But it is on the market, and people are interested. And we are in an extremely strong economic market right now for commercial and residential that, you know, I would think that that would take off this year, and, you know, start the rehabilitation process, along with a bank property that's actually scheduled for a real estate office rather than reuse of a bank. But to get back to the subject matter, so here we have, I'll zoom in a little bit more, alright. So the Pearlie School Field, so this is the Pearlie School right here, if you can follow the, I can't, there's a little bit of capacity left if that needed to be utilized for this leachit system, in addition to what's already there. So this circle area could be utilized as either an accessory or a primary leaching system. And these leaching systems, in all likelihood, it would end up being a drip leaching system, and it's all tied into a low-pressure design of the effluent and dispersal of the effluent. And what it is, is it's small plastic tubes that go throughout the, pretty much the existing terrain, subterranean, and it just disperses at a very low, slow level, the effluent that's being treated on a daily basis. And then, this is the upper field behind into the east of the middle high, right here. So this area was targeted as a potential area.
Like behind the girls' softball field?
Yeah. And this is, you know, the, you know, again, I gotta qualify this, and I'll show you a little bit better illustrations as we go on. And I will try to make it quick and thorough. You know, this is the stuff we really have to talk about, because we're talking, hey, guess what? We want to do this, but we gotta put it somewhere. And the only place we can put it is high school, and that could...
But underground.
Yeah. Now, now, here we go.
Until something happens.
Now, I'll just talk briefly about, you know, what, what's involved with anything like this. So this is the Pearlie School here, this is the existing field. That, that targeted area is here. That has problems because it's high groundwater you'd be building up. It's not...
We know about the groundwater.
It's not the primary location. The two primary locations, and this was really considered by the Economic Development Committee, working with the engineer, that this would be the site for this, this system, the leaching system. And this leaching system, it, it's extremely expensive to build, and it's a five-acre capacity that you need for this 75,000 gallons per day. Even though you're probably talking in realistic terms, a maximum 30,000 gallons a day, and that would be far and above what's there now, which is 13, as I said earlier, 13,000 gallons a day of effluent produced in the, the study area. So this field area, which is also being looked at for enhancement, improvement for that particular field, so that if, when there's more thought put into this, and if, if there's any type of green light, hey, go ahead and look at it, this would be looked at as a dual-purpose field. It would take care of the effluent, but it would also be an active recreational field above on the surface.
So right now, John, since I can't really tell, just to give everybody perspective, is, so the area that, where it would be underground, would be where the knoll is right now? So, so if you can imagine... So, so if you can imagine, if you go up there, there's that big mound of the earth and rock. Right in the middle, is that the area we're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, uh potentially, that can actually benefit.
Where you go up to the next level.
We're on the top, we're on the top field, Suzanne.
Yeah, now, um just real quick to jump off there. The, these two squares here, the yellow, that would be the primary treatment, which is just off and into the woods right now of the parking lot. Um this is the middle high right here.
Next to the shed?
Yeah.
Or the garage?
Yeah, and uh you know, this is a heavily wooded area now, um this time of year. And um that would be, uh that's the proposed location.
What would that look like?
Just like that, it would be like a, like a little shed.
Well, you know, it would be a brick building, it would, it would have a nice appearance to it. Um you know, i- it would look like a, they say, a well-structured uh storage facility.
I feel like the Verizon Building, like.
Yeah.
Not nondescript, but.
Just there.
They're there.
West, like on West Street, at the bottom of West Street to the right there.
Oh yeah, there's that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so in this one here, this is just the accessory one in front of it.
So let me just ask you, John, that the butters over there, like behind, are those, uh have they already been introduced to the?
Uh, no.
To the process?
No, no, no. No, and you know, we're, the, the whole thing would be flexible. It's where most appropriate, appropriate. And um you know, in, in the next step, if we were, you know, say you have time to think about it and you say, alright, let's just explore. And that's all it is, it's all exploratory at this point in time. We don't know for sure at this point, cause we haven't done test pits or anything associated with this whole concept.
Oh, I don't like that test pit, I remember that from Pembroke.
But we, you know, you have to figure out.
We did, right, let it.
It has to be determined and, you know, there's elevations there.
Yeah.
Um i- in all likelihood, as with anything, enough money can take care of mutual problems.
And did, did you do sort of a comparison of what it, what's the difference between sewage and septic?
Yeah.
I mean, I know that at one point Georgetown was going to get sewage, we were gonna connect with, I think it was Groveland, at one point, and we chose not to.
Yeah, we talked about that a little earlier.
Oh, sorry.
No, but that's, no, that's fine, I'll, I'll just, it's a quick, quick roundabout. Um this study, the entire study does take that into consideration as a potential and it's going through Groveland, and Groveland does have sewage.
Mm-hmm.
It, it goes into Haverhill. Um Haverhill has a uh sewer treatment facility that does have capacity. Um the numbers are pretty staggering though. And trying to um implement a, a plan for Georgetown that would even come close to making financial sense unless, you know, federal government, for instance, came out with tons of money for communities to do stuff like this. Probably not gonna happen, you know, in our lifetimes. But in any event, um there is an asteroid out there that they're talking about. It has a lot of gold on it.
Yeah.
So, um so that's really what we're talking about. This is the downtown area. So, and it's a, a low-pressure uh system. That, that material, the material associated with it would be transported underground over to these two buildings, treated. Um in today's treatment of this, and when it's discharged, um it's clean. You know, it, it's pretty similar to rainwater, cause all your treatment takes place in here. And what's discharged has to be safe for the environment. And when it gets through with the leaching, it gets into the groundwater and it's clean. It's as, you know, it ends up being rainwater. You can't pollute groundwater uh systems, so.
This may be a silly question, but I know no question is silly. But I'm gonna ask, so what happens to the people that are affected by this positively? What will happen to their septic?
Um well, that's an important part of this. They, they, you know, a lot of the systems that we're talking about and this system being introduced to replace those systems, um you know, a lot of them aren't up to speed with today's, you know, sewer treatment.
Like if, like if they were up for sale, they'd probably have to.
Yeah, so part of it is, you know, cleaning up the environment, cleaning up that subterranean um effluent environment that leaches into the groundwater system and, you know, so it's, it really is a, a, a clean water um project that we're dealing with. And that's what we're really hoping for relative to putting together the financial aspects of this. Is, you know, you go to the um, the grant capacity entities out there and, you know, really push that this is an environmental improvement, um infrastructure improvement that's necessary.
So the downtown area right now, so we're talking like, uh say the spot in that area, area.
Mm-hmm.
Where is there?
They're handling all that on-site, every building down there is handling, like this, this building right here, yeah.
Septic.
Schools, everything, because we don't have sewage.
Wow, okay.
So.
Something we don't u- usually think about.
It's just, it's magic, it goes out. Um so is it using both fields? I wasn't sure if it was one or the other.
No, no, it just, it's one or the other.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would the high school use that leaching system? I guess the, what I'm asking is, would we sort of be able to recapture the land where the current high school septic is?
Uh.
So is there a, is there a trade-off?
No, that, no, that, well, right now, as it stands, the high school would utilize its presence.
The way it is.
Yeah. And then this would be um a system that would be introduced. And you know, say if there's any type of enticement to um, to consider, eh, that would be that um, you know, there would be a, an improvement, a great improvement to that particular field right now so that it is uh much more usable. Um and then underneath it, there's, it is a, an important use going on too.
So I don't mean to sound flippant when I say this, but is that almost like a way for the community to buy into it?
Yeah, yeah.
You get something shiny. Cause we'll get something out of it and.
You don't ever wanna do anything, you're not gonna get something out of it, babe.
Um so we would get nice fields and.
And Carol would get some economic development potential that she really likes to hear, right?
Well, but you know, in terms of the facility, right?
And, and in, in terms of um school a- added revenue for the school system. Because, you know, you'd have much more value in the downtown area, which we, which equates to uh more taxes.
And revenue.
Revenue, yes, yes, and then.
Not necessarily.
And then we disperse that to all departments, but we make sure the school gets, you know, more than they share because they're really coming up with, you know, they're pitching in.
Right, at least for ninety-nine years.
That's a selling, they better stop it.
So is this on a bigger scale, like in comparison? I'm just trying to, you know, figure this out in my own head, like um, is it kind of like the Little's Hill development? Like where all that?
Yeah.
Go, uses that system?
They have, they have a modern-day um treatment facility in their property.
The only thing that I wonder about that is you just hope that everybody treats their homes well?
Yeah.
In order for it to be, right, cause you know, in your own home, when you have a septic system, you're gonna do everything it tells you to do with a septic system. So let's talk about what could happen if, say we did this.
Mm-hmm.
And, and um what could the negatives be in terms of the system? Like what could happen to the system?
Like a malfunction or something.
Um you, you know, if it's a, if there was a malfunction, it would only be, um you know, you'd have generators involved. So if there was a power malfunction, the generators would kick in so that can, everything continues to flow. Um now, the pumps associated um with the systems in the downtown area, um you know, depending on their generation, generator capacity, um whether or not they would be shut down during a power shortage or brownout or whatever, like that. Pretty much everything does come to a halt, the power gets turned back on. And that's really the only downside of the system not working. Um there is a maintenance aspect, an ongoing maintenance aspect of it. But um the type of system that we're talking about um goes o- goes through a major overhaul every ten to fifteen years. Uh you know, but, and, and they're able to shut down parts of it while they're working on the other parts of it, so. I mean, all of those little nuances have really been worked out, the kinks have been figured out. Um because these systems are being put in place all over the world, but in particular, uh throughout the United States.
John, who would be in charge of maintaining, maintaining it?
Um yet to be determined.
Okay.
And all, we did talk about that in the Economic Development Committee and um in, in all likelihood, we would end up having a, a private consulting firm that specializes. That's really the way to go with, you know, a lot of aspects of trying to afford local government.
Hmm, okay.
Seek out consultants.
What's the lifespan of the leaching field? So let me just, and I'm gonna ask it as a question. It's not like your residential septic system where it goes in the backyard and it filters through the dirt and cleans it all up.
Yeah.
If somebody does sort of abuse the system, it's going through the treatment plant, which is gonna recapture whatever that is. And so the, the, what's coming out is, is water, essentially, like you said.
Yeah.
Um but what is the lifespan projected?
Um you know, we talked briefly about that, it's mentioned in, in the study. Um you know, they, they build these for a long term and because um it's just liquid and it, and it's all treated liquid.
It's much longer.
Yeah, it's just, it's the, it's related to the capacity of the ground to continue to absorb and disperse. And um you know, it's all this incredibly expensive sand that's put in the base and depth of it. You know, it just filters down through and um, you know, this, it probably lasts forty-three years. For, you know, the, these aren't systems that, um you know, they're gonna, doomed to fail if um somebody.
Would it be self-sustaining from the fees that people are charged?
Well, that's a, another aspect of it, having to do with the financing.
Would it be?
That's actually addressed to how much it would cost for each individual property owner that would be tying into it, that's within the system. And um the numbers work to a point where um it's more feasible for somebody to tie into this system, take advantage of it than to put a new system in. And um when you also are introducing the potential of higher and better uses on that property, um that's where it really becomes feasible for the property, increase of the value.
Would it be a, would it be like a Little's Hill, like an HOA, or would be a betterment for those?
What's an HOA?
Like owners, so Little's Hill pays two hundred bucks a month.
And they don't own their land.
Oh, okay, right, it's like a leased situation, right?
Yeah. Yeah. They, we, we are talking in terms of a betterment.
Of a betterment, okay.
District, yeah. But you know, it, you really have to make it financially feasible. You can't make it impossible or it's just not gonna work. But those, those strong details, those much more in-depth details, all have to be worked out as we go along. So we have the study done, we know its limitations. And one of its biggest limitations is, alright, where do we go from here with the stuff that needs to be treated? And the only feasible location. Um and I wanna emphasize here, I'll go back to the other um piston, make sure you really understand that we're not um just pinpointing, you know, the nearest spot. It's really the only spot, I'll zoom out of here real quick. Um the only other spot is this green area here, which, to orient us, we're in Town Hall, which is right here, right there. And this is the uh fire safety, yeah, police department. And on the other side of the, the power lines, former railroad bed, future bike path? Talk about that too, if you want. You just had a very productive couple of weeks with that.
Fifteen years, yeah.
And, and things are really starting to happen. It's going to be, you know, a, a very important recreational outlet for everybody. And um you know, it's, it's in the near horizon to actually start taking place.
That's great.
So um the twenty-five percent plans are done and we're moving in a direction now with the seventy-five percent plans. So this big wetland body here, this pond, um that's the actual pond itself and this wetland here, just in a large part of the pond. Um this green area is conservation area owned by the town. Um I don't know if anybody's ever been up along this way. It's all wooded, heavily elevated, you know, it's ledgy. In, in this study, it describes those physical features. Um i- i- it's just such a far off.
So where is that?
Is this Little's Hill?
Yeah.
In this, so it's.
Oh, it's behind it, oh.
Central.
Okay, oh, okay.
It's forested, i- it has all, and it's, again, it's pointed out in the study cause the study was thorough in, in limit, you know, just describing the limitations, the physical limitations. So you have wetlands here, you have wetlands here, um this is all elevated. Um the capacity for any type of um uh leaching field that would facilitate what we're talking about is just not realistic in, in terms of geography, topography, everything else. So that leads us back, that, that's, that was the alternate closest place. And then you have these properties down here that, you know, again.
So John, you asked to come to be able to just let the committee know what the study was. So but what's, what's required of the committee, if anything?
I would say at this point, cause you're probably just learning about this for the first time. Um and um, you know, we, Economic Development Committee, we've been dealing with it now for two years. Um and um, you know, we've had really time to, a lot of time to think about it and we do know what we want. We did target this as the number one issue to try to achieve. And we were really lucky that last year the state had money for us through the efforts of um Representative Mira and um Bruchtar, Senator Tar. Um they came through for us in a big way and helped facilitate uh the acquiring of this fifty thousand dollar grant. And it was a grant, you know, these loans are hard, cause you gotta pay them back. But it was a grant and we really feel we utilized it wisely and um, you know, productively. We, we finally have as a town, um the engineered knowledge um to really go forward with the idea. All, all, before that, you know, for all these years, it's never gotten to this point where we actually have engineered plans that um based on fact, based on science. And um, you know, we have a, a, a very important area that we'd like to target relative to improving the, the overall um aspect of this community. A downtown for any community, a, a well-defined downtown is probably one of the more important elements. Um maybe not as important as the, a great school system which Georgetown does have, you know.
Thank you, John.
And police and fire. And you know, so we, we have that missing tooth in our, you know, beautiful set of teeth in that we're not having sewer.
We need to be able to fund that wonderful educational system, yes. So is the feasibility, is the full feasibility study on the website, on the town's website?
Um it, it can be put on there, and you know, I'm not sure if we actually put the whole thing on there. But um that, that's an easily, yeah, it's an easily downloadable.
Yes.
I mean, I've been really involved with so many things, it's hard to keep track of all of the little pieces.
Mm-hmm. So Barbie, you asked a little bit about the potential negative worst-case scenario, what could happen? Um to go the opposite way, just a potential best-case scenario. Um what kind of en- enhancements to the field could you provide and inter, like, could we maybe have a running track up there?
Yeah.
I mean, a lot of people have, many, many people have told me their, their wish for a running track.
Yeah, now, that would be part of the overall proposal, is to make sure this area becomes a, a multiple.
And level and, and, you know, usable and rentable and.
The, the only requirement relative to the surface is that it, it, it has to maintain a two percent grade um minimum. And that's just to keep things shutting off. But on a two percent grid, you're gonna have baseball fields, you can have any type of recreational fields and you can certainly have a, you know, a running track.
And there is a committee in town, a field study committee, that is working as well. So I, I think that the timing of all of this stuff seems to be kind of coming together. I don't know what the decision-making process is, that's the question I have, like what, like who makes what decisions?
And that was being, I guess, sort of a two-part question. One is, you know, I know we're on step one of, of a hundred, or whatever that number is. What is the theoretical timeline? And then two, in that it is a school field, is, so by my understanding, you know, this would be the body that would need to approve the modification of the field. Are we, are we gonna be told that we're voting yes? Be, I mean, realistically, is this going to be a, for the good of the town, you don't have a choice, sort of a situation?
No, no, I don't, nobody really ever wants to operate that way uh in today's day and age, you know. You know, you, you want to be comfortable um with making a decision based on all the information necessary to make a good decision and that's, so what would be involved now? Say tonight, you say, alright, yeah, we like the idea, you know, or we're not adhered to it. Um so I would ask, you know, if that is the answer, you know, and that becomes a formal answer. Um the next step is to actually go up there and start looking at the area. Um, the next step is to actually go up there and start looking at the area and doing the pits and figuring out, is this feasible? Is, are the soil conditions alright, you know, or how much ledge has to be, um, removed? How much material has to be hauled out and how much has to be brought in? You know, you start working on those ideas. And then, um, the next presentation would be, you know, say, in a few months, when we get done with that looksy work, that, you know, more in-depth work, come back and say, hey, this is what we've come up with and, um, this is what could possibly actually be done. We can put this system underground and we can put all these other amenities as part of it on top. So that there is, um, you know, a real bonus for, um, the recipient.
A little more detail and clarity to the, in this case, the benefits, as well as the cost and the potential negative.
Yeah, so basically what I'm asking now that you're introduced to the whole idea is that, hey, do you mind if we go out there? And hopefully it happens in the summertime, but the thing is, um, we have to get the money somewhere. We, we don't know where that is yet.
I was gonna, is there money for the, for the, the pits in the park?
We use the fifty thousand, now we gotta go get some more. We have to find that. Um, I don't know how long that's gonna take. It may not take that long, um, um, both, um, Mira and, um, Mr. Tar are ready to help us in any way we, they can, at the state level, to acquire another grant to go into the next phase. In, in all likelihood, it would be a three-grant process. So, the next one is the actual on-the-ground, look at the property, how much is that gonna cost us? Um, let's acquire that money. And then, if everything works out there, we go into the, the third phase of actually design and implementation.
There may, it's old information, but I know prior to my coming here, there was a big study done. Heather Hartford led it and they were looking at that whole area up there, because I, I think there was a, it was a four, at that time, twelve years ago, it was like a four-point-four million dollar project, to add additional fields, but they did a lot of that soil testing and all of that kinda stuff. So, I, I know it exists, I just don't know who the keeper of it is, but I do know that it exists.
I'm pretty sure, um, I know Jeff Moore was in.
Jeff Moore was involved in that.
And Jeff is on those, and Jeff are on the, Ben Scott are on the field study committee. So, I don't know if that's worth you even, I mean, I know you still have to do the study, but I don't know if just, there might be some, just might be some, just preliminary information you might find interesting.
And what that's, it, what that says to me, that, that people have looked at this in, in a serious manner for a serious future of this particular area we're talking about.
Yep.
That preceded what we just did.
Mm-hmm.
The fields as they are.
I mean, the septic wasn't in the discussion, but it was the idea of how to increase the opportunities for the community in terms of passive and active.
And this study was exclusive to this purpose and, and this is what they came up with, with, you know, potentially usable terrain for the purpose necessary.
Cause the fields as they are do have their shortcomings, um.
Yeah.
Exactly.
But I'm all for the downtown area getting, cause every time I hear like, things about, um, you know, difficulty getting people down there is, well, because of the septic. So, I'm all for getting that reinvigorated, you know, to the level that it should be with the amount of residents we have now. You know, way back when, it was a, it was a adequate downtown area.
Yeah, there, there's so many positives involved with this and, and, you know, takes more hard work and, you know, more figuring out and money. But the, the positives just are unbelievable. You know, you do get to further enhance the downtown area, you know, have much more variety of uses that are important for the people that live here. You had, you have added tax revenue, which is important to the school system. And, you know, if all things work out properly, um, you'll have a much more enhanced recreation environment capacity for the, um, the children and, and people at town.
So, then at this stage, then what you're asking is?
Can they go up and do pits?
For the committee to say that, yes, you can go and do these, the further study, yeah, right.
Well, thank you very much. It was a good hint as well.
Gotta wait.
Want to, does anyone ask any questions, more questions loaded?
Well, I mean, I guess this might be putting the cart before the horse. But if all stars were to align, this was to, what, do we know what the impact would be on the daily happenings at the middle high school?
Right, while it's going, while it's being completed.
While it's being built or?
Good question.
You know, I, I.
Depends on when it's being built, right? It would affect the, the town and, yeah, it would affect.
Would you have to wait for the summer?
Yeah, well, I mean, again, those are those details that when John had a timeline, we'd have a better.
It might be early to ask that.
Well, I, well, it's a good thing to put on the table, Cheryl, but I don't think we have an answer at this point. We don't know anything more.
I, I would suspect, you know, scheduling, anything construction-wise, um, with this system, it would take place day school closes, you know, work feverishly during the, um, summer months and, uh, you know, try to get any type of real disruption, um, out of the way before school begins.
And it's up top, it's not side-by-side it, so.
Yeah.
And what would?
They're still running pipes to get it down though.
Wow.
They're still running the.
Pipes.
Um, to get it from downtown.
And you're still gonna be disruptive in the parking lot, in the back, building.
So, we'd have to, we'd have to understand that, exactly how that could work.
Because that, that could be a big issue with the, with the kids parking, because we know that.
We know how we have to deal with construction and stuff in the past.
But like with park and ride, I know they don't like, you know, the kids to be there. And if it's the kids that do have an opportunity to park on grounds and now can't, then they're back to park and ride.
No, there's many logistics that would have to be worked out, but we, just like whenever we've done a construction project, we've had to work with everybody and people have been very accommodating in terms of what's the least disruptive. If it's not like, it was essential, like an emergency, right? It, it's, it can be worked out if, if it decides to go in that direction, I guess.
Right.
We'll have a meeting with Don, Don, we'll take care of that.
Yeah, yeah, no, well, well, I'm sure that we, like, like I said, we've had experience with construction projects and how everybody has to work together and.
So, how long will it take to do the, um, the testing up there? Like, what, what's the?
He doesn't have the money yet.
Time? Okay, so, like you were saying, the summer, but.
You know what, they, they go into those sites and, yeah, they just knock, they knock out those tests pretty quickly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just figure out how many they have to do, you know, where they want to.
What we had to do for the new school.
And how's it gonna be communicated to the, to the community as a whole as to?
Yeah, that's a good.
What's going on, like, like what stage you're at and?
Um, you know, just as we go along, from this point on, it would be for me to go out and see if we can, um, acquire a grant, um, for this type of work. Or if, you know, if it's not gonna cost that much and, you know, the town has, you know, a certain amount of money to, um, utilize for this exploratory, uh, session of the property, you know, we can go that route too. There's a lot of engineers in town, you know, they, they, they do step up to the plate.
Mm-hmm.
That's how we became a complete streets.
We know, we know that, we've had that benefit of that.
That's great.
Yeah, we became a complete streets program pretty much overnight because of, um, local engineers that stepped up the plate and helped us. That was an expedited, um, process, you know, it was supposed to take more than a year and we got it done in several months.
Right.
Pete Turkey was instrumental in getting that done. Sue?
Pete can get.
Well, do, so, we need to take a motion on that, so? Well, I mean, I think forty-five minutes, I think we've gotten most of any of the information that you have readily available for us, which I appreciate that.
You probably have as much now as I do.
Well, I'll make a motion to, um, allow the town, yep, to, um.
Conduct testing?
Yeah, conduct testing at the upper fields behind the Georgetown Middle High School. When the, um, town has the financial resources for that, as presented by John Cashel, the town planner. So, moved. For the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Economic Development Committee, the Water, Cycling and the Planning Board.
Thank you for coming, John.
Yeah, good luck. I, I look forward to hearing how it goes, because it has definitely been a, a subject that's been on since I moved here twenty years ago.
It's been a discussion forever. And everybody says, gee, you know, we had three other opportunities to tie in and we never have, so now it's like, here's the fourth, right? So, it's like, do we do it, is this the charm or not?
Right.
Of course, that's three, right?
Yeah.
And usually works.
Yeah.
Well, good luck with it.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, and have a great summer.
Yes, I've done a lot of work, thank you.
This will make my summer.
The principals next.
Yeah, sure. They are here for the, um, the end of the year reports, so.
And just do closing of the year.
Right, yeah, okay.
And then I'll, we'll talk about the behavior coaches.
Perfect, so, um. Uh, you guys, Margaret and Dan, you wanna come up?
Wanna come on up together as a team?
So, Colin has a personal day and Jack had a baby. So, his wife had a baby, so he's.
He looked exactly like him.
I, I, that picture was so funny, like.
Oh, how alert.
He was one day old, I'm like, nothing's gonna, guy's not gonna miss a thing in the world. Yeah, he's cute, yeah, he's adorable.
Trot, trot.
Trot Nixon. That's what I think of, I wonder, I'm gonna ask him, where, we were having, we were all debating whether he was having a boy or girl and most of us said boy, so we were good. And was it gonna be a T name or not? And he wasn't gonna tell.
Were they all Ts?
The, the ones with his wife Jill are all Ts.
So, the, his other, his youngest, who's like two, how, what's his name?
His name is, oh, boy, just, uh, Tate.
Tate.
So, he's got Talia, he's got Talia, Tate and Trot.
He's just setting himself up for it.
He does have two older boys, but they're, one's named John and I, I can't forget the other one, so they're, they're not, they're not the T, the T group.
But he is a mini-Jack, isn't he?
Yes, I didn't, I looked at him like, oh, yeah, that's, we know. I think, you know.
He definitely looks like him.
He definitely does.
I didn't wanna, I emailed congratulations to him and I said, oh, he's so beautiful. And I didn't wanna say he looks like you, cause I said, oh, you're saying.
Jack would never let that go, there would have been a comment. You would have set yourself right up for that, Margaret.
The years of practice.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, thank you guys for coming.
Thank you.
Tonight.
You know, I told them they don't have to come in July, cause July will be like a really simple, so. We're taking one for the team tonight.
Yep.
So, they were just gonna do kind of like an end of the year, kinda wrap up and, like I said, no formal presentations, just, just a closure.
So, and I, I don't really even know what you'd like to hear about.
Your end it.
So.
Your end it.
It was good.
It was very good here.
Uh, I mean, I got notes about, um, my SIP, I don't know if you're interested in those kinds of details or?
Maybe just, what were some of the highlights, Margaret? What were, what were some of the highlights?
Yeah, like, most of, like, so how did, how did the, how did it end? You know, was it on a good note, all that, like you?
Yeah, well, the, yeah, the, you went really well, but she's.
She's on her last page.
There you go.
And then what is the plan for the school, like, I, um, did you already have that science, Heidi's science?
Invention.
Oh, invention, that's coming up, oh, okay.
Right.
Yeah.
The, the end of the year just always comes like boom. You know, once, once April comes, we know it's, it's heading downhill, but then for some reason, it's like, what? I always say to the kids, you can't go, we've got too much to do. But it was a wonderful end, um, we did, um, just kind of looking back, uh, as you know, we had three wonderful teachers retire.
Yeah.
So, we had a great celebration for them and we had our final community gathering and again acknowledged their leaving. Um, we had our moving on ceremony for grade six, and that's always wonderful, um, time. Um, just all the activities through the year, um, our STEAM night, literacy night, looking at what the PTA helps us, you know, book, um, the, you know, the book club, um, spelling bee, so all kinds of activities. Um, we had our, another barbecue, so our annual barbecue, which was another fun event, um.
The Memorial Day.
And the Memorial Day, which again, just seems to get bigger and really just more wonderful. And we're so lucky that we've had, been able to have it outside, because I really don't know what we would do to have that size and have it in, in the gym. So, we've been lucky, um, you know, to be able to have that outside.
Is the tradition still staying at Penbrook with the last day of school, how the staff comes out and waves?
Waves.
Yeah.
Well, it's not, it's not really, and I.
This year it poured. It wouldn't happen, yeah.
Was the last day of school range?
Oh, yes, you're right, it did, it did pour.
But it's also hard to figure out how we would do it, that, to be, to be honest. And every, the other district I was in before, teachers did do that, but that was the district where all the buses, all the children left at the same time. So, everybody was able to go out. But the way we dismiss, not everyone leaves, so it's like dribs and drabs.
Did you still have like extended day that day?
We still have extended day, um, you know, children leave, get, they get picked up, um, they leave by bus, they walk and then extended day. So, it's hard to have everybody out at the same time.
But they do have that nice tradition about clapping for the sixth grade. So, maybe you could say that, cause that's really a nice.
For, for our last community gathering, normally the way we go in, the older children go first into the community gathering, because they're obviously waiting the longest and the kindergarten goes last, so they don't have to wait as long. But for our last community gathering, all the classes go into the hall and clap down the sixth grade, we play some kind of, you know, festive song. And then, so they're the first and they walk by everybody and everyone, all the kids clap and.
It's nice.
It's, um, you know, festive for the kids.
I know we talked about this, uh, a couple of, maybe a month or so ago, but we've been talking about it for a while, trying to get into the tradition of, of having the, um, the seniors go to Penbrook. I know it was too much this year to do that.
It's just the day, because the kids were going to the prom on the same day.
The same night, yeah.
Right.
But I'd love to see that real, that happen. That, that would be so cool, because those Penbrook kids really, I don't think our high school kids realize how much the kids really do admire them and look up to them, especially seeing them in the whole regalia, you know, I'd love to see that happen.
We have several high school, many high school students who tutor. So, there, there is a connection with the students, some of them work in the after-school program.
And the teachers, some of the teachers would have had them.
Right.
Actually, that's getting further and further.
Well, and I think, um, in the beginning, the first year that Penbrook was open, I, I just, I don't think there was, there was a, there wasn't really a connection. The school was new, it wouldn't really have meant anything for either set of children. But I think now that we've, the school's been open and children are almost those same kids that have left, I think there will be more of a connection. So, I think next year, you know, if we can pull that off, I, I think it will have meaning for both sets of kids.
Good.
Yeah. So, um, and then our play, fifth grade play, which is always, and this year was phenomenal, I don't know who saw it, the flying.
Oh, wow.
The flying scene, I mean, it was.
They, they were trying to figure out how to make Mia, how to make Mia Gerard fly. But then they, but she did it through this whole technology thing where the screen came down.
It was a green screen.
It was like a green screen.
No, she laid on a table.
Yeah, and, and it looked, and it looked like she was, it was unbelievable.
That's awesome.
Elizabeth was pretty proud of herself.
I mean, and, and very.
Talk about using your resources.
Oh, it was phenomenal. And then, I mean, I just have to say though, a parent got up, the minute the screen came down, went out to use the facility, missed the whole flying scene, came back in. It's like, you had to choose that one, you know, if we created it, no?
Was on video, or they, did they tape it?
Charlie was there.
Charlie did, yeah, so it actually might have run, you know, on cable, but it was, every year, every year, they just do such a phenomenal job.
Outdo themselves every year.
And they start working on it what January is, sure.
Yeah, but even the students who choose not to act or be on stage, they are phenomenal. There were two in particular who ran the whole sound system, um, then two who ran the lighting and, I mean, it was just amazing, so.
Everybody participated.
The set, you know, the crew.
Wait, is this, I can't remember anymore, is this, because it used to be fifth grade.
It was fifth, it's still fifth.
So, it's still the fifth grade play, okay.
We, the first year, I don't know if you remember, we, our plan was to have the sixth grade do it. So, the fifth grade did it, then that following year, those children were going to do like, um, just a small presentation. And then the following year, that other sixth grade would do it. But what we found is they thoroughly lost interest. They didn't care a thing about being involved in any kind of production. You know, they get, they start, friends are more important, they have after-school activities. So, then that following year, we brought it back to the fifth grade and that's, it's been perfect.
Good.
So, I think that's it, I mean, I, I will be talking in, you know, formally about our, um, SIP goals in the fall, when we kind of look back and then look ahead, so. Um, but I guess, um, the other just major component is the continuation of PBIS. And this year we had second step, which was a new curriculum that, um, all teachers used. And we carved out half an hour a week for all grade levels to do that. And, um, still collecting data and, um, a- again, I haven't looked at the results to compare, you know, how the data from the end of this year compares to last year. But we'll be doing that.
Project Lead the Way?
And then, Project Lead the Way was our, so we're in our second year of STEM scope and Project Lead the Way. So, that became more routine.
And you have some staffing changes for next year, right?
Yeah, which again, I figured I would talk about, maybe in August.
We'll put. We'll put, we'll put the, you know how we always do that staffing update?
Yeah, the open and closed.
Yeah, do that for you, so.
Yeah.
But there have been some changes.
Oh, and then just, um, so I've never really given an update, um, an end-of-year update, but every month we have Fun Day fundraisers, raising money for organizations that are near and dear, either, you know, for students or staff. So, um, we raised over two thousand dollars toward all different organizations, so.
And then that goes where?
In your different organizations.
Oh, it totally goes to them.
I used to help when they did, like, the fun, the hat, wear a hat, did like a crazy hat, like things like that?
I have lunch with, um, a group of sixth graders, and then they decide what the fun is, so, and then every month it's something different, either heart association, or epilepsy, or, um, camp stepping stones, um, Mike Donah, Mike Donahoe.
Scholarship.
Scholarship in the melanoma foundation, um, juvenile diabetes, heart association. Um, Alzheimer's, um, do they say Alzheimer's?
Autism, autism.
Autism, so, um, so ten different orgiza, organizations.
Good.
Two thousand dollars.
It's good for the kids.
It is great for the kids.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
That's about it.
Unlike Margaret, I do now have five single space type pages, I have two. We had a, a very successful year, and our big highlight, uh, was the SEL squad that did a lot of training and went out to workshops and came back in and taught a lot to teachers, and conducted the faculty meetings, Professional Development Day in March, and that was probably our big highlight for the fifteen faculty members that read the book together, um, teaching the whole child, so as a culture shift, I think we moved a little bit in a direction of social-emotional learning, and we'll continue to keep moving in that direction. Our play was Seussical, which was, uh, we didn't fly across stage, but we did okay.
I, I saw, it was great.
Very popular, a lot of the kids, uh, families came, um, it's a great family play, and they did a great job with the set and the acting, and they, they did a wonderful job, as you know, many of you were there. Some highlights, another highlight is the Women in Leadership Conference, that is the first time, uh, that this has been introduced to any school, the MIAA has, uh, helped us sponsor that, Hockmeyer Studios jumped on board as well, helped sponsor that, and is open to all the KPN schools, we had about seven schools come to the conference, so we'll be doing that again next year, and.
Let's hope the MIAA stays in existence.
Committing to the vision, we'll see.
Knocking on wood.
And, uh, so we're gonna make that an annual event, and I have to thank, uh, Mr. Brown, definitely for helping coordinating that, and that wasn't at, um, an, an event for our, our athletes, it was for our women and leaders who show quality of leadership, who just need that nudge to get into that role, and that was the qualifications for selecting our students, we had about forty students, a total of about a hundred.
That's great.
That was, uh, definitely a proud moment for the school, no doubt about it. Internally, uh, new clubs, Model UN, big success, uh, great interests, uh, new course, AP Psychology, we have over forty-plus students signed up, we have two sections full, um, so that's a huge, uh, hit for next year.
Is that the, the most populated AP course in the school?
I'm gonna go out on a limb and say yes, because I don't know of any other that we have two sections for.
We don't have two sections, right, exactly.
Right, right, so, yeah.
Okay, great.
And that's Mr. DeFranco, TJ?
Yes. So this is gonna be a huge hit, and I think, this is a great, I, I said it at one of our meetings, entry-level AP course for kids who are interested in AP classes but may not have the prerequisites, so it's a great entry level, um, to the higher, you know, more difficult, um, AP biol, biology or something to that effect, so, um, appeal to a lot of students, and, uh.
Excellent.
We'll continue to tap into their voices to see what they're interested in, and the program studies in the fall, and introduce it from there. Student Voices was a big hit, uh, we did a lot of meetings with teachers and students combined about, uh, mid-year exams, final exams, open campus, AP exams replacing final exams, why take an AP exam and a final exam, uh, we had that discussion together, we came up with a conclusion to, let's get rid of the final exam, if you're taking an AP exam, why do it twice?
Did you think the open campus went well?
I think it went very well.
Yeah?
Yes, um, I really have to thank Shay Matthews for coordinating a lot of the activities during the open campus, she had a lot of social-emotional learning activities, you can do yoga, uh, you can go down to the art room and create, uh, create a couple of things, she had probably, uh, close to tw, at least a dozen activities that kids can go to in, middle and high.
Good.
Which was nice to see the mix, uh, doing yoga.
So the other thing too, I wanted to ask you, I don't know if it was Susie that mentioned maybe the district that you work in, that if a child receives like a particular grade, that they don't have to take finals.
Oh.
Right, without, is that something, is, was it, is it an over?
There are, there are districts that do that.
There are some, right, that do that, is it an asshole maybe, I don't know.
There, there are.
There are, and, and I, and I looked at it a little bit, like, at first I was like, no, I don't agree with that, but then I looked into it more and I saw the educators reasoning, with not being an educator, I was looking at it a little differently, and then I'm like, oh, is that, what do you think about that?
Well, that came up in our discussions, when we got rolling with these discussions, the faculty and students are like, well, what if this, and this, and that was, we had to stop at some point, because it just kept rolling, and then we were running out of the school year. Mid-year exams, we talked about final exams, open campus, AP exams, uh, senior finals, open campus, and that topic came up as well.
So was it like, if you score like a B or something, I mean, it has to be a relative.
It should be, it should be higher than that.
Well, it's a A.
Oh, okay.
It's just for an A.
Yeah, they should. Higher than a ninety-five average or something in some places they do it.
And then they ta, then they take the final away.
So we had a table-based discussion.
Because it's all cumulative is what you're saying, because that grade was cumulative, and they got an A for that year, why bother taking it?
Correct, right. Why bother, because you can't get it any higher than that.
Right, and it might even lower it if you.
What, do, do you?
I mean, I'm sure there's pros and cons.
Right, as an educator, though, like, what do you think about that, do you see the, we, you know, do you see the value in it?
They get back to you.
Yeah, well, yeah, like, because.
Well, the goal is to show mastery in the subject area, and if a student has shown that level of mastery, then what's the purpose of the exam, and I would throw that question out to that group of, a new group of students and, uh, teachers, and have them grapple with that, and go back and forth, and see what they come up with, but the goal is mastering, if we're showing mastery and.
I mean, so will that be a topic of discussion for the upcoming school?
That'll probably be another one, uh, kids and, um, students and, uh, teachers really like the grappling back and forth on these topics, and they were very respectful of each other, and.
I love debates.
Ninety-eight percent of the time, they were on the same page, which is really interesting, so it always existed, we're just now implementing it.
And so it's, it, it's not a hundred percent that whatever teacher decides will overrule the students, it's something that they'll work together on?
I think if we go down the road of, um, exemption from, uh, final exams, it should be consistent throughout the school, just make that clear, so that we don't have different levels of. Understanding what mastery is, mastery is this mark, and then from there.
Yeah, right.
I think that's how we'll probably introduce it.
Prose and cons, too, I, I mean, just, I don't wanna like say exactly what, but, you know, my, my son in college said that in, in college, you know, he gets like two tests for the whole semester.
My kids are just saying the same thing.
And he said that's so different, yeah, but I mean, in, in high school, there's a lot of, you know, testing every week or every two weeks, testing short-term learning, so a final exam could test long-term memory and long-term study and all that, it's just like another, there, there are benefits.
There, there might be some teachers, if the way they set up, set it up, so it's the end of the year, so that it measures what they learned in the second semester on too, you know, so, so, yeah, you might have some people who might object to that, but it's, what, what's the driver?
But if you're preparing for college, you might wanna.
Well, I, I know my kids said the same thing, they're like, geez, mom, you know, like, if you get three tests, and you bomb on the first one, you're in big trouble, and there's, nobody's giving you extra credit because you participate in class.
Yeah.
Exactly. Or maybe that, maybe that one would be optional, you know?
I don't know.
Whether the child has that steady A across, you know, of, or, you know, and then they have the option to take it or not.
Well, that'll be up for discussion, won't it?
Good, I love that, I love how the kids are able to.
Yeah.
Sit with teachers and, and administrators and see what's important to them, and actually have their voices heard.
And be comfortable enough to say what they want to say.
It was awkward in the beginning, I don't think this group has come together, it's not just one group, but anyone could attend, uh, and then once they got a rhythm going, their voices start surfacing, and that opportunity just needs to be presented to them, so.
Well, and even.
Be careful what you ask for.
I know.
I guess, like.
This is gonna be a coup.
So far, so good, so.
Throwing out another option is, you know, you might have a final exam per se, but it might, you, you might have choices as to how, you know, you might be able to do this kind of project, or take a more traditional test, or write a paper, I don't know.
The whole, like, senior exhibitions is another discussion that we've been having, yeah.
I'd be curious on something more, I am not shocked that nine, you, you said ninety-eight percent, that ninety-eight percent agreed to open campus, not taking exams, and these weren't exactly contentious.
A little bit, the exams were, some teachers hang on to that exam, is this is how I prove that you have learned my knowledge, you know, knowledge that, uh, you know, we have gathered, and really stuck with it, but after the discussion got going, uh, they let loose of it, but you'd be surprised, and I, I think this, um, exemption discussion, uh, from final exams is gonna be some, a tough one for some folks.
Are the, so I go, it was for this, is this a temporarily, temporarily permanent, I mean, and is this, is the, the open campus, the exams, is that, everything that happened last year is just assumed to be happening next year?
Yes.
Or is, okay, so they're starting out, you don't have to re-advocate for it?
Correct, yeah. So more discussions to come, provide that opportunity for kids to have voices, and just kinda facilitate it through, and before you know it, the culture all agreed, um, in the end, which is nice. So those are some of our highlights of the year, uh, there's a few other things, but, uh, you know, those are the ones worth mentioning, and we'll continue for next year.
Good.
Thank you both.
Great.
So you can just hang here for a minute, 'cause we're gonna talk for a minute about the behavior coach.
Okay.
'Cause that's gonna impact, impact all of you, so I tried to do a little summary in your packet, I hope that was helpful, breaking it down in terms of how we're doing it, um, you know, this is, you know, part of the discussion, the, the driver in the discussion is the, the intervention model, the tier, the tiered structure, and, um, that's something Pam, I know, has always asked about, what is the tiered program look like at the middle high school? And so over time, what we've been doing is putting things in place, so, um, at the Pembroke for next year, it really, we're implementing this, I gave you the job description, we're implementing this program because we were able to redirect some, some resources. Um, so we will have tier one, which is obviously the classroom teachers, tier two would be, um, the behavior, the basically the behavior coach, and to some extent the guidance counselors, and then the tier three is the, the, the actual, um, um, behavior program that we have. So we do have some shifts in some staff, which Margaret will, will talk about, but, um, some people are moving, so we will be hiring, uh, a, a new person for the, um, for the, uh, what do we call it, Margaret, the?
Social emotional.
Oh, we don't have like.
It's being called Thrive.
Okay, Thrive, for the Thrive program, um, and we, we just, uh, basically hired the behavior coach, uh, who's a gentleman from the Boston Public Schools, who's actually a true inclusion teacher, he actually was a classroom teacher, teaching all of the content, and he taught his special education students, did all the ed plans and everything else, so he really has a good framework of, you know, working, you know, with the inclusion model, and how do you, how, how many be able to work with teachers to help them develop strategies on, you know, the connection between what's going on in the classroom behaviorally, as well as what's going on in the classroom academically, those two things do tend to go together. Um, and it's the same discussion we sort of had in both schools around why a behavior coach, or why somebody, you know, in that tier-two role, and a lot of it comes down to when we think about the behaviors that, you know, we're, we're focusing on through second step and all the interventions we're doing, there are usually kid, things like school refusal, um, you know, uh, students not staying on task, you know, just being disruptive.
School refusal, like not to, not going to school, or just refusing to.
No, no, just refusing to do what's going on. So, you know, and they're, they're those kind of what I call classroom management, you know, kind of challenges that every teacher has.
So that LEAF program, is that still going on as well?
Yep, that's the, that's the.
Sorry.
That's the PBIS, so that's a tier, that's a tier-one support.
I just remembered something about a LEAF.
But that's a tier-one support, and then Margaret does have a tier-two support that goes with that, that she uses sort of like her guidance people, you know, for that kind of a thing. Um, and then, so that this person, uh, would really work with the teachers, you know, around, um, you know, sort of behaviors that are, that are happening on a regular basis, that are interfering and disrupting the, learning of the children, but they're not necessarily the kids who have serious emotional, social, emotional issues, um, that really, you know, cause them to, to really not be able to sort of function in the day-to-day. At the middle high school, the challenge we found was, it's either in the classroom, or it's sent to the MAPS program, which is a tier-three, should be a tier-three intervention. Pembroke already had a lot of these things in place, because Margaret's been implementing the subset process, which is kind of like, um, the, uh, what do we call, what do you call it?
The social emotional.
Social emotional component.
Student assistance team.
Of student assistance team, that's right, so Margaret's already had some of that in place, and with PBIS and the interventions.
But we have a teach, we have a student assistance team at the middle high school.
Well, we, we sort of do, but we don't, it's not in the shape that Margaret's, so one of the, so with the middle school, um, some of the teachers, and particularly the special ed teachers, brought up some concerns that they had, because if you remember, Jack restructured that program, and that MAPS, he kinda took the MAPS teacher and he was gonna convert it into a psychologist, which we couldn't find a psychologist, so in the meantime, there was some redirection of resources there to just kind of put together what they called a transition program for kids who might be having some trouble, but they weren't, again, they don't really, they're not kids that really belong in a self-contained, you know, really strong, but there was nothing else, right? So, um, we met, uh, several times, we actually went and observed, which was really fun, uh, the teachers were, were great, um, and at the end of the day, we said, the school needs a resource, but it's not the MAPS teacher back, the way it was, 'cause there's nobody coming out of Pembroke who actually is on an IEP for a program that's that restrictive. So, it, you don't wanna be having a, a person sitting there all day without a mission, right, nor do you wanna do the, if you build it, they will come, right, so now any child who's misbehaving, or giving, you know, trouble in the classroom, now automatically goes and becomes a kid on an IEP in a MAPS program. That's not the, that's not the inclusion model we're trying to promote, and it's not really good and healthy for the kids, that, so, but the teachers need and want some support, if there are children that are in the classroom, how can adjustments be made, how can agreements be made, so that these kids can figure out ways to, you know, do their work, or, you know, some intervention, some supportive intervention. So that's what we're proposing, the behavior coach will be, it'll be somebody who'll work with, it might be working with small groups of, of students, um, and it might be working with individual students, creating, um, plans, you know, so what, you're having this trouble with Mrs. Marr, you know, Mrs. Marr, you know, that says that this is, what do we, what, what agreement can you make, Mrs. Marr needs you to, to do this, what can we, what can we put together for, for a plan? And it's not a, it's not an IEP, it's not one of those plans that, you know, everybody's takes to the bank, um, it's a, it's a plan, right, it's a, where, where the kid gets engaged, the student gets engaged, the teacher gets engaged, and the goal is to try and just minimize some of these behaviors that have been very concerning, um, and are impacting the culture and the, um, and the, you know, the feeling of success for everyone, right? So I think people are very excited, we are gonna use Veronica Schaefer for this position, Veronica's perfect for it, uh, she's, she's a talented special ed teacher, but has done regular ed, she's very highly regarded by her colleagues, uh, people go to her, just anytime to just say, you know, um, you know, could I try, you know, she has a very, uh, wonderful reputation, um, the kids also, you know, consider her to be extremely, um, positive and, and approachable. So, um, at Pembroke, because of the culture, it made sense to have somebody from the outside, 'cause we found some, but that would not have worked at the middle school, we, we don't believe, for, for the simple reason that the middle schools had a lot of change, they have a new principal, they have a new administrative structure, they lost their sort of individual person, the MAPS teacher was taken away, it just, it was just a lot for them, I think that's what I saw when we were sitting with them, that's what I heard, I heard like, oh my god, what, like, what's, we're the, we're the stepchildren here, why are, why are we, you know, why are we not the high priority? So I think in doing what we're doing, um. So I think in doing what we're doing, um, cause we are also creating the Bright program, which is for the kids that are very short-term, the concussion kids that, you know, need something in the, in the meantime, um, and they're also, those, there's also kids that'll be in there that, um, you know, might be coming back from a hospitalization and just need to get caught up before they just venture back into the classroom. We are, our therapist has left, so we are actually using the opportunity to create, instead of a therapist and a school adjustment counselor, we're talking about doing a school adjustment counselor for seven, eight, and nine, because that, the, it stays with them through the transition. And then school adjustment counselor, which would be Beth Daly, would be ten, eleven, and twelve.
So who's seven, eight, and nine?
We have to hire the person.
Oh, okay, so Beth Daly-
Right, so, cause we, the therapist resigned, so instead of just hiring another therapist, you know, it gave us an opportunity to step back and say, alright, wait a minute here, what's, what's the best way to do this? Right, so that's, that's our plan, and I tried to describe it to you, I know it's a little convoluted, but, um, it just worked out very well, I think, and I feel like now we're gonna actually have at the middle school, a, a tiered approach. Um, that I think, and that's gonna help us back into a stronger, um, student assistance team. Cause now there'll be somebody who's really there to sort of be a catalyst for, you know, making those connections. So the next step is, um, we have a grid, uh, with all the positions at the top, and a, a couple of boxes, one is direct service, the other is consult, and then the last one, I think, is caseload paperwork, or whatever. And now we have, we're gonna bring all those people in, and we're gonna say, alright, now let's, let's put the, put the, you know, the, the things in the right boxes, so you know who supports you, who connects with you, we don't wanna duplicate effort, but it really, just like Dan's talking about the student voice, it really has to be the voice of the people who are gonna be most directly affected by it. But I think it, 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 in many ways, it feeds into our, our vision for social, emotional, and tiered instruction, and I, I think it's gonna be a good thing, I'm pretty excited about it.
I think too, the, the teachers that you, um, met with, and, and you did the walkthroughs.
Yeah.
I'm sure they're appreciative too, that something is coming out of-
Well, yeah, and I think that's what's interesting, is that they, like Jack said, they only want what they want, I said, I, I think just let's play our process out. And I think that people were able to step back and go, okay, you know what? We're just, we just, we just need to know, like, if something happens, what's, what, who's there? Right, is it just gonna go to discipline? Right, cause then even if that is the case, cause there are some things kids do, they have to deal with the assistant principals, but if it's somebody who's repeatedly having the problem, then the assistant principal can bring in the behavior coach and say, hey, you know, can we do, can we-
Do you bring in the families as well?
For, oh yeah, they'll, yes, they'll be consulting with the family, certainly, yeah, as a, as a way to, you know, as a way to find- Yeah, but, you know, I think over time, I, I feel like it's something, and even the teachers, I think, after the fact said, you know, maybe they're right, maybe that's, this is exactly what we need. But, you know, it was a process, right, and it, and it was a good process, and we had, we had the, you know, the plan already in place, working on it at Pembroke, so it's just gonna allow more of a K to twelve perspective, although understanding that they're two different levels. So it has to, it has to look a little different. And so, we have some very talented teachers, who I think are very excited about being part of, you know, a change, where something really proactive and positive can come out of it.
And Veronica is wonderful, she does the kids-
I think, and she's very exciting. I, I'll tell you, I did tell her though, that if she did not like it, that she can go back to her position next year, that, I felt like that was a fair thing to do, right? And, um, you know, she's, she's, she's just really excited about it. She's, she's feeling like, you know, this is a, a nice change, and, you know, she's, she likes to work with kids that, you know, are in that situation, so.
So the individual from the Boston school district, have they already started?
No, no, no.
Okay, is it, so male, female?
It's a male.
Jared.
So in the fall?
Yeah.
That will, that will be-
Yeah. Margaret was like, I, I know who we're hiring.
You were just impressed with-
Yeah, Jack was too.
Yeah, we, um, we had three interviews, and he was the last one, and it was just a click.
Yeah.
You know, you just, you just know when somebody, when you're in sync, and they have, they're on the same wavelength, and they, they, he knew where we were heading, and what we wanted, and he has experience with PBIS, so he's, he's familiar with everything that we're doing.
Well, and what a difference in districts, like, right, and from such, I mean, one of the largest school districts in the country, to, uh, you know, to Georgetown. So that'll be very interesting to see how the transitions-
Yeah. Yeah, he might be pretty excited about it. But I think, I, I think the other thing that weighed into it is, we have had a lot of success with our reading coach model, and with our, um, technology integration specialist model. I think it's not a new model, right, so people could have seen the value of that. And so I, I think that they'll be comfortable saying, okay, you know, I think I need some help with this particular child, or whatever, and there could be some proactive, cause there, there were some situations this year at the middle school, and it was really tense for a while there. But because there was some intervention provided to a couple of these kids, at the end of the year, you know, there were many opportunities for them to shine. Um, in particular, um, you know, one at, at the Memorial Day ceremony ran the whole, the whole PowerPoint presentation, right? So it, it, it's giving kids an opportunity for other people to see them in different ways, right, to find the strength that they have, right? And most kids do not want to misbehave, you know, some, sometimes it's a lot of different factors. So this is just trying to give kids a sort of a safe place to, you know, kind of redirect their thinking on, you know, what's the best choice.
We all can agree too, um, that middle schoolers, not to scare you, but middle schoolers-
It's a tough age, it's a tough age.
There's so much going on between social media, we're gonna fit in, and it's just-
Yeah, it's a tough age. In fact, I just, uh, ran off, but Margaret lent me her, uh, her book, that Chip Wood, who, who ran the Northeast Foundation for Children Center School, in, actually in Greenfield for years, you know, he's a world-renowned speaker, he wrote a book called Yard Sticks. And it's a great book, because it basically says, you know, the eleven-year-old, and it's social, emotional development, academic development, and I, I ran off those pages, cause I, I wanna make sure that Veronica has it, so that, you know, because a lot of times what happens, and I think in this middle school, it's particularly difficult, because you're in a high school. So there's this sense that, you know, these middle school teachers feel this burden, I think, it is a burden, to like, make sure these kids like, behave, and get, you know, get ready, like, they're, but they're not little mini high school kids, they really are developmentally, you know, different. And so, you know, part of what I think we have the ability to do here is to just really help people understand that some of their job is to misbehave, right? Is, is to, you know, to struggle.
Mature and develop and grow, I've noticed for all three of my boys, a big difference between their eighth-grade selves and their ninth-grade selves. They, they just seem in ninth grade, just a little bit more confident, and more kind of, they know what they wanna do, and they wanna study, and they have ideas, and they're willing to talk, I mean, I just, I definitely see a difference. Well, that's good, I think that sounds really good, I'd love to hear from, from, um, Veronica.
Yeah.
Um, as well as a gentleman that'll be at Pembroke, to see like, you know, maybe like, um, that January timeframe to see how it's going. Like a tick stick, checking in.
Yeah, yeah, we'd love to do that for you.
I wish, I wish it the best of luck with it, because I do think that middle school, um, needed something, I mean, we've been talking about that for a long time, and I, I do think-
But it was really good to go in, and like I said to, to Jack, I said, we're gonna do some action research, so it was really good to actually go in and talk to people and watch, you know, what the kids were doing, and, and then have an opportunity for like the four of us to get together and say, okay, and, cause we had Chris Aldoni in that too, cause he's, plays a big part. Um, and, you know, we, we all saw similar things, and some things we saw that were different. Um, but at the end of the day, what we said was, okay, the resource does need to stay there, but what's the resource, what should the resource look like? And that's when we were able to, um, identify based on what we saw and what we heard, you know, what, what the gap might be. So I'm, I'm looking forward to, to seeing how it, how it goes.
Okay, good. We gotta do them.
Great. Okay. I think you can go, I don't think there's anything else.
Enjoy the summer if we don't see you.
Thank you, you too.
Enjoy the quietness of the school.
That is nice, but it's, but, yeah, I was gonna say, you miss the kids though.
Relatively speaking.
It's all going into a school when it's quiet.
It's so quiet.
But, yeah, relish in that.
Yeah, thank you guys very much. Take care.
Bye you later.
Okay, so we have middle school, uh, science curriculum. Yeah, I forgot to bring, you didn't need to see it again, did you?
No.
Okay, cause I have it in my office.
Cause he sent us the-
He sent you the links, right?
Yeah, he sent us the link.
Okay, wonderful.
I love that, when you can actually go in and-
Yeah, look at it, but I have to say, I, I have to give you guys credit though, because most school committees do not do that.
Yeah.
They do not, so it's good that you have that kind of interest, and you take the time to do it.
Yeah, I thought, I thought that was great, and Colin presented it right out, which was awesome.
Yeah, he's terrific.
Oh, so do we, are we approving the job description?
Well, I think you probably should, just because I, I feel like we have you approved-
In order to put it out there, right?
Well, no, I mean, we've kinda jumped the gun, she's, yeah, we've kinda jumped the gun, but I thought about that after, I'm like, well, technically, it's a new job description, so we don't really have anything like it. We, we have school adjustment counselors, but it's really a different job, so we would appreciate if you would just do that.
Say no. Okay, so I'll make a motion.
It'll be one vote.
I'll make a motion.
We don't do that too often, though. It's all good.
I'll make a motion to approve the job description for the behavior coach as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you all. We'll, we'll, we'll do it differently next time. No, we'll do it differently, but it was so interesting, cause we were, we were doing it on the fly, and then, you know, we did it at Pembroke before we did this, and I thought, oh geez, but, so we didn't really think of the job description until after we got to the middle school, and we had already hired the Pembroke. I said, well, I guess we'll call it the same thing then, and we'll just-
Yeah.
Beg for forgiveness.
Okay, so the middle school, um, science curriculum, yes?
Yes.
Okay, you guys didn't give me a motion, I thought it was okay.
Oh, we didn't?
No.
Yeah, there's a motion right there.
Oh, under nine?
Nine.
Oh, sorry, okay, thank you. Um, so I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the middle school science curriculum, to be paid out of the school choice revolving account in the amount of thirty-two thousand one hundred dollars and nine cents, as presented by the Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Colin McDonald.
So moved. Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did everybody like it?
Yes.
I did.
I really did.
Similar to, I, I felt like it was similar to STEM scopes.
Yeah.
Um, and I can see how overwhelmed-
It though, because then, you know-
But because then it, but it's a leap up from it, you know, so they did that.
Have to learn how to use textbooks, right, so they, it's a little bit more of a technical guide.
Is that what you mean?
Sorry.
I'm sure you were saying it's very similar to-
Yeah, it's like the, um, the setup online, I found it was very similar.
Yeah.
Um, and, I mean, the, the way it was broken down into the earth sciences, the life sciences, and it gives so many options, which STEM, STEM scopes does as well. Like, almost too many options.
That's right, they'll have to spend time, you know, but, but the nice thing is only one teacher, right? It's one teacher of each grade, so it's not like you have to get five teachers all on the-
And that's Ms. Fogarty and Ms. Misses Patel.
Mrs. Patel, right.
Yeah, I liked all the activities, I mean, I had a lot to offer.
It did, yeah. Well, good, I'm glad you guys enjoyed it, looking at it and took the time to do it.
I think that Colin does a great job of investigating.
Mm-hmm, and he engages the teachers.
Absolutely.
So that's really important.
And using the vertical teams.
Cause I mean, he could, he could've said, well, we're doing STEM scopes, K eight, he could've done that. But when we talked about it, he said, well, there's a couple that we're looking at, I said, well then, you know, see what they think. But make sure it's based on pros and cons, right, that's what you're trying to achieve. And, uh, you know, they, they made the argument that it flowed nicely, and it led in, the, the biggest issue, as I told you, was, we really needed to get on board with an integrated curriculum.
Right. But that's what I mean, he, I think he just does a really good job of investigating.
Yes, he does. He's a, he's excellent.
So I, I just, so the item about the school year calendar change, don't we also have to look at though, that date in May?
Yes, yes, I have both, I might've, yeah, okay.
So, yeah. They're not going to have school that day?
Well, well, I should've left Margaret here, because Margaret felt strongly about it, that she, that she did not want that, if we could avoid having Election Day as being a day in school. So I did talk with Colin about this, because, you know, he had his PD calendar planned, right? So I wasn't gonna just pick a date, so, uh, it's basic, I gotta find my calendar. Um, basically, what, we have three, we have the three full days, so there's two that are sort of early in the year, right? I wanna say one at the end of September, as soon as I find my calendar, it'll make more sense, but early in September, and then one I thought was in October, or November. And then there's one in March.
March twenty.
March twenty, correct. So March twenty, um, if he has to exchange, so it'd be, I believe the Election Day would be May twelfth.
Okay.
Right, cause it's the, is that correct, Michael, it's, cause it's the second Tuesday of May.
Second Tuesday, cause the first one would be the town meeting.
The first Monday is the town meeting, okay. So I'm thinking it's May twelfth, all right? So he said he would prefer to exchange the March twentieth for the May, and do May twelfth. So we would be making a change from, um, from, uh, March twentieth to May twelfth. Right, and then we would just have Election Day off, and then he just would, he just would transfer what he was going to do on the twentieth to, to May.
And I agree, cause Election Day was a little bit, and this is the first time we've had contested elections, or meaningfully contested elections in a long time, and it was-
But that, but that's not gonna get any better, right?
It's, can we reach out to the clerk's office again, to see if we can get the senior center approved as a, cause I know, two or three years ago-
The gym, the pearly gym?
Because if, it would seem to me that if it's, if it works for a senior center, it's ADA compliant, I don't know what the specific rules are, but-
Well, when, when Jan McGrane looked into it, cause I was a proponent of that, I said, why don't we just use the, this, even before we had the senior center, right, I had her look into it.
Right.
And she said that the woman, whoever came out from the state, and said that the handicap ramp is, is pitched a little too-
But I assume it's now compliant for the senior center.
For seniors.
Right, no, but, I think that was going in the gym.
In the gym.
But if we did it-
Is that what you were thinking, Michael?
In somewhere appropriate.
Right, or somewhere in the senior area.
Or, or even in that cafeteria, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we could, we can certainly talk to Colleen about that, I mean, she uses the cafeteria for matches.
Senior center.
Why was Saint Mary's looked at? Somebody mentioned that.
Uh, they, there was a discussion about Saint Mary's.
Though, remember, that was-
No, it didn't, I mean, we, we have a new clerk, so it's worth the conversation to have her bring somebody out, but, um, I'm just thinking that-
Rejected every other site.
You know, they, they, yeah, because they, you have to have a certain amount of space, you, you know, right? So I don't know, like, in the senior center, even the cafeteria, I think would be very tight there.
Yeah.
But the gym is a possibility. But it had to do with the, right, so, again, I, I don't know, so I think we can look into it again.
Okay.
So we'll make a note of that, right, Nancy, and we'll, we'll ask the-
This is becoming reminiscent of last year's calendar, remember, we had to approve it like-
A couple of times.
All the holidays and stuff.
This should be good?
I think we're good.
So I'll make a motion to approve the changes to the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year as, uh, school year calendar as presented. Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, wonderful. And then we have some donations. That we have to take here, so we have, um, donation from the PTA, so this is a donation for next year, so for the-
Oh, I guess not.
So, do you wanna, go ahead.
Oh, no, no.
No, no, I was just saying, Suzanne, maybe you can vote with Michael.
Just ask now, so she doesn't have to say.
The, have we figured out end of year?
Well-
Numbers?
Yes, well, we're still closing, and, you know, still numbers are coming in, so, so it's not final yet, but-
So there will be additional funds in special education that are unencumbered, that we weren't, beyond what we talked about the first time.
Okay.
So our recommendation, since you kind of approved the major areas, right, the last time, is that when we make the line item transfers, we'll, we'll make them in those areas that you, you suggested, it'll just be that special ed one, will be larger than the initial discussion.
And in my July report, I'll have what the final numbers are.
Okay.
But I just-
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
In my head, it was the, July first is-
Right around the corner.
Right.
It is right around the corner.
It is, but, believe it or not, we're still getting-
Right, everything is gonna be closed, we're still, right, we're still grabbing invoices, right?
Yeah.
Um, but the dishwasher's going to be delivered tomorrow.
Oh, yay.
Dishwasher came in.
She'll be so happy, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
The Munis software we, we received, so, um-
Oh, that's great news too.
What was the other stuff? What was the other stuff? Oh, the, the, um, food service, bad debt, we had to figure out, uh, how we were going to do that, we ended up working with the town accountant and it'll be a transfer as opposed to cutting a check out of our.
So then next year, next year, it'll, it'll just be, some people will still owe and we'll still be trying to get them, but.
Yes, but it'll be clear in the food service, right.
But, but, we aren't in a deficit.
They still owe the money, yes.
So does the bad debt tran, so the bad debt transfers to the town?
No.
No?
No.
So it just gets written off?
Yes.
Okay.
The general fund will cover the bad debt, well, there'll be a transfer from the general fund to the, to the food service account, mm-hmm.
To the services.
To cover the bad debt amount.
Do we, do we know? Do we know what's outstanding?
It is six thousand twenty-four dollars, something like that.
It is some of that old bad debt.
That was the final number.
Still half of that was.
It is, it, it does include old, going forward, we'll just have the, the current year we're in, but this year.
Is that a couple of thousand? I mean, I'm just, I don't know how much was bad debt.
Yes, it was like four and two, exactly.
Yeah, I remember.
That's what I thought.
And some of that, too, is people that have left the district.
Right, that we're not gonna get them out of town.
They moved away, yep, they were just.
Okay, well, that's much better than it was a few years ago, where, you know, so, and they actually did end the year on the positive side.
Oh, totally, yeah.
Yes, I haven't seen all the numbers, but I'm very confident it'll be on the positive side.
Good. So July meeting will have all that?
Yes, yeah, I just, uh, Tracy couldn't, you know, she has to balance the checkbook and all that, so it just can't be done until July.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Of course.
Okay, now you can go.
Okay, so we have a donation for PTA, which they have always supported that camp year trip, which is great, because it is, it, you know, is a pricey trip.
Yes.
Um, so, um, I will make a motion to approve the generous donation of a thousand dollars from the Georgetown PTA for the grade six camp year trip, uh, November twenty nineteen. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, PTA, that's wonderful, and we also have a twenty-five hundred dollar donation for the student peer mentor program. Um, again, from the PTA, which is great, and I, I love how they're, um, moving their money around to the different, to the schools, which is, which is great. Uh, and this is a, a great opportunity there for the peer mentor program to continue, so I will make a motion to approve the donation of two thousand five hundred dollars from the PTA to support the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty student peer mentor program.
So moved. Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, PTA, and Bob and Elaine Caciola, this was a wonderful, um, thought on, um, their behalf for the, for the, um, Georgetown High School auditorium lights, which have, have been in desperate need of, of, uh, replacement, and Bob being such a talented musician, it was really nice of him to, um.
No, but the band was great.
Yeah, Poor Boys is great, uh, and also for the Reynolds family to have that happen in their venue, which is very nice, so, um, the two thousand dollar donation from the Poor Boys Benefit will cover the Georgetown High School auditorium lights, which is awesome. So, I'll make a motion to approve the donation of two thousand dollars from Mr. and Mrs. Bob Caciola from the Poor Boys Benefit Concert to support the replacement of the middle high school auditorium lights.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
The, so this is two of sixteen thousand dollars or so. Will stuff be done, or is this just ultimately defraying?
It's gonna sit there.
It's not gonna have a sixteen.
Okay. But I think they have a really good, I think there's a lot going on, like more people wanting to have things going on to.
Yeah, I, I've been helping, I've been helping the music parents with a few different options.
Yeah, that would be great, because we've been, they've been needing to be replaced for a while.
Yeah, yeah, they have.
Okay. Perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Um, but.
The, um, the gender equity policy.
Oh, right, yes.
Yes. Well, looking at the other, uh, other school districts, too, it's, yeah, very long.
Oh, yeah, no, it's, there's a lot.
This follows the advisory from the state.
Both of them are, one of them was not, but we're trying to follow the, the letter of the law and really hold this, you know, close and tight to the, the laws, um, we reworded some of the, right, wording here to make it more policy-like, but it's, I actually ended it at the gender transition, I gotta read the rest.
Well, um, based on. Yeah, and this is really just our distribution, so you'll talk about it.
Right, but based on, um, advi, advice from council. The, on page two, the first sentence, um, where it says gender identity law, see act, enact relative, that should be changed to chapter ninety, chapter one ninety-nine of the Acts of two thousand eleven.
Okay.
Um.
What, what Greg basically said was that, uh, if you, if you call that up, it doesn't, it doesn't, it isn't the law, so to speak. So, so he just said, if you're gonna reference it, cause Cheryl and I went through and actually Googled all this stuff today. So the only change, it was literally to just change the structure of the first sentence that just basically said, chapter in one ninety-nine, section one of the Act Relative to Gender Identity defines, it's, so it's, it's really, it doesn't change the meaning.
Of the Act of two thousand eleven.
Starts with, starts with, uh, chapter nine.
Some, something else comes up.
Oh, okay.
If, that's not the law.
So we just want, you know, he, he picked that up, he said everything else, he said, I, he said, I, I definitely looked at the, the guidance in relationship to your policy, he said, I could see that it was very tightly connected, he said, I didn't have any issues whatsoever, he said, but this is a policy that it's a tricky one, cause he said, if you read, you know, if we read it closely, there are some people who are not gonna agree with this. But, it's basically following the advisory from the state, you know, in, you know, regarding the, the law. And, it, it, it's really about civil rights, so if we don't, you know, have a policy and something comes up, you know, and we, it, somebody challenges us and takes us to court, there are large settlements in civil rights violations, so it's really important that, and thank you Pam for bringing it forward, cause she saw it somewhere else, but I do think, um, Greg was
And, and now at the end, this cross-reference, I see this en act relative to gender identity, and then the link goes to, she says, two thousand eleven at some point.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, but here's a little thing to correct right there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, so you, basically, if the committee next to, next week will talk up specifically about what your questions or comments are on it, but this was really just to get it in your hands, and Cheryl just wanted to bring that up, that there were a couple of quick things, because we left the last meeting saying that we were gonna have our attorney review it.
Right.
And he was gonna get it back to us by the twenty-fourth, which he did, so, that's why it was able to be put in here.
So do you want me to make these changes and then get them to?
Well, I think, you can make them once they finally adopt the policy, I wouldn't make it, as long as they know what the changes are gonna be.
Let me just keep, so I have. Did everybody get a chance, well, you did, did you guys get a chance to look at the whole entirety, cause I did not. I just did the half.
So, so.
Cause I really wanted to, like, take, take the time to.
We had to for our school, it's really confusing in a lot of sections.
Yeah, Inover did one.
Yes, and you just have, I mean.
We looked at that.
It was stuck months.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Well, we actually had someone come in and talk to us.
Thank you guys for working on it, because it is a very important policy to have, but sometimes that works, when you have somebody come in to, to talk you through it.
We had somebody come in and talk to the whole staff about all of this, because there are just so many avenues and, um, you know, terminology and where the terminology came from, to give us a clearer understanding of, of this, because it is daunting.
And we do have a section, we do have a section here on education and training, and including this in staff.
But Desi comes in and does a great job.
Yeah, he does, he, he, we had, we had him come into, um, to the middle high school this year, he, he does a great job.
Yes.
I don't remember his name, but he's very good.
Which is, again, part of the law, too, the, the, um, section on education and training, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so lastly, I just wanted to talk about, um, getting a memorandum of understanding between the.
Well, the timing of that, I think I just put it on there for the, for the, you know, get it on the radar screen, because, you know, depending on how the town goes, if the town wants to make it part of a town department, sort of similar to what happened with the senior center, we set up a, you know, we, right now, it's hard to know who to set the memorandum of agreement up with, but I think the discussion that we had at one of the meetings was, there probably should be one.
Well, it, it is, but it is gonna be a town-sponsored.
It's a town, right, it is.
Place.
Right, but right now.
Yeah.
Right now, that's, that's in flux, right, so, there, there, Michael and I attended a meeting with Mike Farrell, Joe Bonavita, Ed Dobie, and the town accountant, Mary McMenamy. Um, and the discussion kinda there was, okay, so what is the future of this, and I left the meeting feeling like there was good support for it, it's just the figuring out the funding, so, um, Mary and uh, Bram, uh, who's on the, the committee for the, for the youth center, uh, they're going to meet with Andy Egmont, um, and then I know they're, they're reaching out, because what they're doing smartly is they wanna figure out, like, other senior, other, um, youth centers around, how, what's their funding structure look like, cause I think conceptually, everybody agrees it's a really good thing. It's really a question of, you know, sort of, how would it be funded, what, what will the funding look like? It does look like we're, you heard, um, John talking about a fifty thousand dollar grant that, uh, the, you know, the senator and the, and, um, representative, uh, got as a grant, that's, we are online to get a thirty thousand dollar grant, um, but there was discussion at that meeting about how, how does it need to come in so that it doesn't go into the general fund, so that it's actually a system?
But that was figured out, right?
Well, that, we're understanding that it's gonna be a grant, cause I think the, the, those offices know that if you do it any other way, it just has to get tied up for a year, uh, into free, general fund, which goes into free cash, and it's just a whole bunch of challenges with that, so. Um, but, so the question now is, you know, it, how does that process move forward, right, so that come budget season, there's an actual plan.
Right.
Um, but we've been meeting, talking about logistics, like, security and, you know, wifi and maintenance and, um, like, insurance and all, all those logistical kinda things that do need to be worked out.
I was also, I, I don't know why I was under the impression, I, but I was under the impression that it would only encompass that room upstairs, the li, the former library.
No, it's the whole top floor.
So it's the whole top floor, including the teacher's lounge.
Cause they don't use that anymore.
Right, and then the two first grade classes that used to be there, right, when you walk up the stairway, the.
Um, and Colin's office will still be there.
Colin was, Colin's still in his space, yeah.
But, but will they be doing any work to make it like a one big floor?
No, no.
So what will those two other, like, what will those separate, um, rooms be used for, are they gonna have like different themes in them?
Upstairs? Yeah, so, so what, what it is right now, and you should come over and take a walk around, and again, once the kids get there, they might change their mind on how they wanna do it.
Yeah.
So when you, when you come up, when you come up, so if you're in my office and you up that back stairway.
Yeah, to the two first grades.
To the two first grades, the smaller of those two rooms is a creativity space, so it's got, um, lots of art supplies that people donated, it's got, it's gonna have Makerspace supplies. It'll just, but it's got two tables in the middle, it's gonna have stools, and it's just, it'll be a creativity space. Um, then, if you go to the other first grade across the hall, the, the larger of the two spaces, that has a smartboard in it, but that's gonna be a game room, and that's gonna be a space where the kids can do their robotics, make their robots move and that kinda stuff, that'll be kind of an activity. But we have a ping pong table, we have a foosball table, we have, uh, bumper pool table, there's like fi, four or five tables games. Then you go out into the big space, big space has, right now, it's divided sort of into three spaces, but you have, uh, you know, actually, I, I donated big sectional couch, it was too big for my house, so, you know, I thought this would be perfect for that, and it, it, I can't believe it fitted to my house, that's, that's how big it is. But there's a big sectional with a big screen TV, and then there's a middle section which has two or three couches, there's some chairs, um.
Somebody donated like a, a console, a video game console.
Coffee, everybody, oh, yeah, video game console, and then, then there's a, then there's an area that can be for puzzles and games, we're looking for a pool table, we'd like to put a pool table there. And then there's like a big ta, a table, high top table with some chairs that somebody donated, and then, and then, yeah, and then over.
There's shooting hoops, like.
Shooting hoops, it's like, almost like an arcade thing.
Oh, yeah, we have one of those.
Oh, you do, well, anybody wants to donate, stuff.
Yeah.
But then, then on the wall by Colin's office, right, there's, before you go to the bathrooms.
Yeah.
That's gonna, that's gonna be a, a big, um, one of the, uh, ca, cabinets, you know, like bookshelf, I guess, bookshelf, and then it's gonna have, there's four big screen TVs that are gonna sit on the top of that. And then, there'll be game systems sitting on the shelf, and then the, three, three game chair, gaming chairs, which was new to me, have been donated, and there's some bean bags, and so that, that whole little area there will be for video games. Um, and then the space on the end where the well is, the place where the kids can sit, you know, remember that, when you were, they were pre-staging?
Like the staging?
No, it was a little.
Yeah, that, like, I used to read stories.
Yeah, so that's right now, that's right now scheduled to have a staff mem, the staff member will be in there, and that's kind of a quiet space. So the kids can get tutored or read or.
Do homework. I'll have to go and check it out, because I haven't been there in a long time.
There's a lot that still needs to be done, but, like, this group, Michael's the treasurer, uh, so, yeah, so this.
So you keep track of?
It's easy right now.
Yeah, yeah.
It's gonna.
Once the thirty thousand dollars is figured out, you'll have that.
Well, that's town money, so it won't even be our money.
Oh.
Yeah, so they'll probably organize some kind of a friends group, it'll probably be like a friends group, so that they can get some, yeah, so there's, so the.
Get some donations.
I think people have already lined up.
Yeah, so the Kiwanis, the Kiwanis Club are huge partners, um, they actually donated two thousand dollars to actually replace, rip the carpet up and replace the flooring in the Makerspace and in the game room.
Okay, so I, maybe that, and I'm totally for the youth center, I think, I think it's great, I think the town has needed it for a long time, but that's what, so, they're gonna rip up, like, the property that is now.
It's their yucky, they're, no, no, we're, we're recommend, we're, we're recommending that, because the carpets
Oh, yeah.
yucky and disgusting and gross, and if you're gonna put art supplies and paint and.
Yeah, you don't want it to fall on the rug.
I mean, you don't want, so that's, that's, we would like to replace those two.
When they, when the Kiwanis donates that, are they donating?
Okay, so that's the other thing, that's a little tricky, so, they, the PTA has worked with their national chapter, and they're called, they're calling themselves the fiscal sponsor, so they have an aspect of their, of their finances that can be used for six to nine months or something, they said. So, they can accept donations, the teen center, people can get, donate now to the teen center, to the PTA, and the PTA puts it in that account.
Okay.
So.
And so the reason, so the PTA is a fiscal sponsor, because the youth center is not yet its own entity, so it's not a, it's not a nonprofit.
Yes, okay, right.
Um, and we can open account, we could, we could operate certainly, but this allows donations to come in tax deductible.
Tax deductible, yeah.
So it's a, it's a short-term mechanism, it's really gonna last for the summer, it's not gonna last much longer than that, because the PTA is not going to, will not be involved in the sponsorship and management of
Right.
the teen center being open for a day or two a week, whatever it starts out as.
They might do a project, or, you know, an event, they said.
But it's not gonna be the, the whole, the entity of the teen center.
No, no, that's what they talked about last night.
I do think it is important to develop, and, and whether the MOU is between, or the MOA is between who the two entities are, I do think it is important, and I think we can work on it now, cause I think it would help define who owns what and who, what the ru, what the rules of the relationship are, because as much as it's an old rug and it should be replaced, it is school property which I, I would, I would argue that the school committee needs to agree to, um.
I, I don't have a problem with that, you can do it.
But it's also, if, if down the road, they do decide, hey, we really wanna move a wall.
Yeah.
Well, what's the procedure for that?
Yeah, yeah.
Looking back at the senior center.
We agree.
I mean, we spent a year on the MOU, and we were talking about walls and spaces and everything, and we haven't done any of that at the school committee level.
Yeah.
I don't think we've really talked about it at all.
That's kind of the point of the MOU here.
Yeah.
Right.
But do we?
Yeah, the MOU for the senior center was more like.
But we were negotiating spaces.
We were, we we said it would be X amount of spaces, but yeah, we were right, we did do some of that. Yeah, I, well, like I said, I put it on there because we had talked about it, and whoever wants to work on that, we can certainly
I think it would also help the youth center to start nailing down things like security.
Yeah.
I think, and I was on at the meeting last night, but I think there was, there has been discussion of students coming in the kiosk door. How do we?
No, yeah.
And maybe that's.
We didn't discuss, the only thing we talked about last night is there's three summer events.
Right.
So the first event is on Ju- um July twelfth, and that everybody will come in through this, through the front door. Right, so the the doors will be, obviously, the doors around my office are locked, and going up down to the preschool is it and then those doors that could go up the stairs, those doors will be open, but there'll be a s- a table uh where kids are gonna register when they first walk in, so they, the only thing they can do is go up the stairs, register, and then the adults that are gonna be at that space are gonna be there for the whole event, so if anybody comes down and is wandering where they don't need to be, then
So they have like a signup table, like all the kids coming in.
Yeah, so they have, they're having an electro, what do you call it, electronic signup, um automated registration process.
Is there like an iPad there or something, like or?
They're still researching that. But there there were, there are, there are a lot of of, the people who are working on this are really diligent.
And are they looking at like other youth centers as to how?
That's what they're doing, yeah, yeah.
I I wouldn't even know where to begin.
North Andover to start with. Yeah, and and I know Erin, Erin's been talking, Erin Duggan has been talking with the guy from uh North North Andover, and actually, the the events for the summer, Tina Los is going to pretty much donate her time to to do that, and then there is gonna be, the, so the guy who actually runs the Newburyport Youth Center, he's actually going to be a paid em- paid employee, um so he's going to come.
Providing services, he's not gonna be a.
No, no, yeah, he's providing services, but he's gonna be the paid person, I guess, probably, he's a paid person. Um and then, you know, I think next week, they're gonna get together with a group of kids to actually just plan the session and they're they're, it's gonna be, have to do with funny food and glow sticks and I don't know, they got all kinds, it's, but it's kind of like a come check out the center type.
And remind me again, the the age they're targeting?
For these activities in the summer, they're talking about grade six to nine.
Okay.
And there are high school kids who are offering to volunteer and um be be part of it.
Okay.
So.
It's incoming grade six.
Incoming.
There was.
Okay.
To include the incoming.
Oh, okay.
Soon to be six.
So that, so.
Cause there are.
Yeah, that's a good.
And rising to rising to eighth graders.
I'm excited to see it, I'll have to make some time to.
Yeah, yeah, oh, for sure, do that.
And and how busy are the meetings? There's a lot of people involved?
Well, I think, I think that they've streamlined it a little bit, because there's a lot of like decisions and work that needs to be, and so it's hard for people when they show up and they don't know what their purpose is, right? So I think that um one of the things that they're asking people to do, so there's this sort of steering group, I'd call it, right? And then um they're asking people to like promote, you know, promote the events and um share it with your network, you know. Um there'll be another signup genius with a few things that people need, you know, uh if people wanna make a donation, that's that, those are ways that they can help, you know, so, yeah. It's been a, um, you know, I've I've just been really impressed with the the people who have been like really focused on doing this, doing this project, and I think, I think if we can make the case to the town, and I think, you know, well, it, you have to have proof of concept first, right, you gotta see whether or not it's gonna, it's gonna work, right? And then, then you can figure out, you know, sort of combination of state money and town money, and then maybe as the marijuana money, you know, if it materializes, then you, you know, you don't rely on the state money. It's just, it might be a process of two or three years, but we, I think we're trying to get to what's the budget, like what's the need, right? You know, how much money do we, do we really need? And then, if it's gonna be part of Park and Rec, then that's a discussion that that has to, has to happen as well, and that was why we all met, is to, you know. Yeah, a few of us met with the Park and Rec Board, and they um at first, I think they weren't really sure, and then when they left, they're like, yeah, if you guys can make this happen, we're all for it.
So that's like John Dunleavy?
Yeah, John, John, um Jim Demento, um there's a Al and Dave. Dave Showers and I don't remember Al's last name, um and Juliet Rec was on for a while, and I think they still kind of keep her attached. Um 'cause she does some scheduling for them or something, but she's not officially on the Park and Rec, but if that, if this does become part of. If this does become part of Park and Rec, then I think what the Park and Rec people were saying is, you need to get some new members to come and join us, right? So, you know, if you want this to to happen, then you need to get involved at at that level. So we'll see where that goes, but uh, so how do you wanna go with the memorandum? How do you wanna do that? Do, how do, do you wanna, I don't remember who did it the last time.
Uh with the senior center?
You did.
I was part of it, I'm not looking to be part of this one.
The draft came from Mike.
Yeah.
And then.
And then we got together and then we tweaked it all.
Yeah, so we could look at, we, I mean, we certainly can look at that draft.
The senior center one.
Yeah, yeah, we could certainly, we could certainly look at that, yeah, for sure.
But yeah, until we really know who it's gonna be between, I guess, that's.
But like Michael said, we can at least identify the things we need to figure out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so you'll you'll.
So I, but I just wanted to know from the school committee, who wants to do it? Do you wanna do it, Michael?
Yeah.
Do you wanna, do you wanna do it? Anybody else wanna do it? I don't know if you have to, 'cause we don't wanna post it necessarily, but.
Well, you just like review the the MOU, and then work together as a committee to see, you know, what you'd like to be.
'Cause we'd wanna have the town be part of the discussion.
Okay, and I'm, can, we need two, is that right?
Uh, yeah, I, well, it's it's either, we just have to make sure if we have two, we have to post it. I don't have a problem doing that, but we.
Okay, yeah, good, but all right, so Cheryl and Michael will work on that, good?
Okay. And we just have to figure out who we work with.
I might be on the youth center side.
Oh, okay.
Well, that's right, that's right, 'cause Michael's, he's playing kind of two hats there.
Okay, well, then if Cheryl's, then you wouldn't have to post it.
And we wouldn't have to post it, that's right.
Okay, I think, I think, yeah, good.
That's pretty exciting.
Okay, and we are not gonna have our executive session.
This evening, so.
Um we'll figure that out over the next week or so, if anybody can attend, yeah. So, at this time, I'll make a motion to adjourn at um eight fifty one, and again, no need for an executive session.
Soon.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, have a safe summer.